We have our Police Chief, John Schmerber, Fire Chief, Rick Huffman, Senior Center Manager, Colin Black, Finance Consultant, Kathy Brucker, Public Works Consultant, Jim Wynott, City Recorder, Tammy Bannock, and back by popular demand is Mr. John Southgate to do a brief presentation this morning. All right, John?
Good, thank you. I love John Southgate. Worked with him on a number of projects. First time I've seen him in over a year. I mean, we loved him, he was great. We bumped elbows with vigor. It was super. We're going to start out this morning with kind of a state-of-city hall presentation by your management team. First, any follow-up, I mean, real quick, any follow-up reflections or ideas or things yet to be said about last night?
Yes, thank you.
To all of you. To all of you. It was, your work was impressive, thank you. We're going to have each of the department heads come in and give you an update. They're supposed to kind of be doing three things to help you know what's going on in City Hall, what has gone on in the last year. So we're reviewing accomplishments. They're tagging those back to the goal-setting from two years ago. And so we'll have some benchmarks and some going up to today. And then they are asked to forecast what they see coming down the road. And these are things that are big nugget items for them and their team and what they're going to be working on. And also, it's items that they're going to need, in some cases, to have the council weigh in heavily. And those are the things that might end up being the items that you would want on your goal-setting, because they're going to take quite a bit of time. And this would be things, you know, like a major rate-setting process or something that's going to take the council to engage in a lot of policy discussion and decision-making.
We don't have that, by the way. There is no.
Oh, no, 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 okay. That was some other tip. So, close heed to what they say, because part of what we want to mind is not only the resource of their time, but the resource of your time as counselors. And how much of a load do you want or need on your council agenda through the next two years? So with that, let's have our parade of stars.
So I think what I'm going to do is kind of give you a state-of-the-city's talking points, because you guys talked on some really important things last night on how, when it comes to policy, you make good decisions. And I think it's important for us to reflect on some of the big decisions that you made last year. So I'm going to start off with reading you something, and then we're going to give you a work-plan handout. And we will start with our areas of focus. So Gladstone provides its local citizens the following services: police and fire protection, water, stormwater, planning, some economic development, library services in partnership with the county, parks, some recreation, roads and sewer. After a bruising year that included not only a global health crisis, but a painful reckoning over racial injustice, devastating natural disasters, and a polarizing presidential election, our excellent management team at the City of Gladstone is hopeful and wary of what a new year will bring. There are many employees at the City of Gladstone, and we have all gone through so much together. We are more aware than ever of how much we rely on each other. We have remained positive and full of desire to achieve. We know this will pass. So before you hear from management today, I would like to highlight major accomplishments from the last year that mirrored the city council goals, which are: communicate with the public, invest in infrastructure, affordable housing, provide resources for parks, identify a brand message for Gladstone, and explore annexation options. So, we received a grant from Department of Land Conservation and Development to complete the 2021-41 Gladstone Housing Needs Analysis and the development of a community engagement strategy. We updated the Gladstone Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and received FEMA approval. You completed the Trolley Trail Bridge feasibility study. The outcome included five alternatives, which were vetted to the community for public feedback. The abandoned Trolley Trail Railroad Bridge collapsed in 2014. The replacement bridge will cross the Clackamas River in the City of Gladstone at the same location. The city was awarded federal grant funding to study the feasibility of replacing the Trolley Trail Bridge for the pedestrian and bicycle safety. Clackamas County Housing Authority purchased 18,000 Webster Road using Metro Affordable Housing Funds. They also received approval for a conditional use permit to convert the existing 27,000-square-foot building to provide 48 residential units that will be a mix of single-room occupancy and studios for older adults. They chose to rehabilitate the existing building so the newly renovated homes will house people over the age of 55, and they have made Gladstone a priority. You amended Chapter 1710 and 1712 of the Gladstone Municipal Goal Accessory Dwelling Units to become compliant with House Bill 2001 that addressed an affordable housing goal. You entered into a regional wastewater system cooperative agreement to address outstanding issues pertaining to governance of regional wastewater systems. You declared a COVID emergency, which drastically changed how local governments provide services for the remainder of 2021. You moved into a $13.5 million Gladstone Civic Center on time and within budget. You completed a reconstruct on East Clarinon Street. You participated in regional conversations regarding Gladstone's position on the I-205 tolling. You completed the final phase of the Meldronbar Park dredging project. You implemented text amendments to Title 17 to reduce off-street parking requirements for the new library project. You developed a new Gladstone brand and tourism strategy and are launching it into the community. You approved a lease agreement for the Gladstone Fire Department office space located on Portland Avenue across from the station, which is identified in the Gladstone Fire Department strategic plan. You launched COVID Emergency Business Assistance Matching Funds. And throughout the year, the city council, Parks and Recreation Board and staff researched various options to implement, provide resources to the park's budget, and provided direction for staff to implement a parking fee at Meldronbar Park in 2021. You held a listening session on social justice, equity, and inclusion. You implemented a Parklet Pilot Program and outdoor dining and retail and private parking lots program due to COVID. You completed the Gladstone Housing Needs Analysis Public Presentations. You sold surplus property at Clackamas River Drive to provide resources for park's budget. You entered into a collective bargaining agreement between the Professional Firefighters of Clackamas County, IAFF, and the City of Gladstone. On Labor Day weekend, Clackamas County was engulfed in wildfires. We provided regional support for those displaced due to evacuations and maneuvered through poor air quality. The Clackamas County Food Distribution Program needed space to move the countywide food program during the COVID pandemic. The city entered into an IGA with Clackamas County to use the Gladstone Senior Center. Now there is sufficient space for the county to store food and needed supplies, as well as assemble 400 to 500 boxes per week for delivery using COVID safety protocols. You entered into an agreement with St. Vincent de Paul Portland Council to administer assistance to City of Gladstone residents in financial distress due to the COVID pandemic. The emergency assistance may be used for utility payments, housing, rent, mortgage payments, and food assistance. You held an annual severely rent-burdened public hearing to address affordable housing. You entered into an agreement with Water Environmental Services for addressing infiltration and inflow, source identification, and rehabilitation program consistent with the stipulation in the Oregon Department Environmental Quality Mutual Agreement Order to invest in our infrastructure. You approved a resolution condemning violence and racism directed at Black African-Americans and all people of color and affirming the City of Gladstone's commitment to equity. The Gladstone Library Planning Task Force and Clackamas County Board of Commissioners unanimously approved the Gladstone Library Master Plan. The preferred design alternative has a public plaza and corner entry at the intersection of Portland Avenue and East Dartmouth Street to create a strong civic presence in downtown Gladstone. The design will take advantage of public spaces that wrap around a light-filled interior courtyard, providing an indoor-outdoor experience for patrons. The inferior spaces are efficiently organized to accommodate all of the necessary library functions in a 6,000-square-foot space. Throughout the year, Public Works Administration and Legal Council met with Oak Lodge Water Services District to discuss items that need to be addressed in a new permanent agreement. Oak Lodge Water Services District and the City of Gladstone each own and operate a sanitary sewer collection system and water distribution system in Clackamas County. A portion of the district's water and sewer systems are located within the corporation limits of the city, with the systems currently serving customers who are considered residents of the city. Both entities are interested in updating roles and responsibilities for providing utility services and also considering transferring certain sewer customers from the city to the district and vice versa. We expect this work to be completed in 2021. The city council, Parks and Recreation Board and staff completed a process for the Nature Park Master Plan. This will guide the future development of the neighborhood park as a park and outdoor recreation facility. The master plan provides the guiding concept for the design and development of park improvements to enable the appropriate balance between conservation and recreation as a facility within the city's park system. And finally, for many years, Gladstone invested little or nothing in maintaining, updating, or replacing infrastructure. Small rate increases or no increases at all in some years meant Gladstone's rates didn't keep up with inflation. That led to serious deficiencies in the integrity of the utility systems. To address these problems, the Gladstone City Council committed to catching up on infrastructure needs to maintain the health and long-term vibrancy of the city by addressing the need for rate increases. You did all of that in one year. And given the current pandemic that we're in, I think it's pretty incredible. And your management is very excited about when we come together as a governing body and a management team of what else we can accomplish these next two years. And so with that, I believe we are going to hand out the draft work-plan, and I'm going to have Kathy Brucker come in, and we will start going through our presentations. We did a lot, about 10 minutes per department. And if we need breaks, we can take breaks at any point.
Just 10 minutes?
To give you overview.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Confirming.
Yes, that is the one.
While she's passing that out, I'll tell you that you worked with another city council, actually, it was Wood Village a couple of years ago, and the number-one council goal, they couldn't publish, but they all agreed to it. It was get shit done. And I've got the chart pack sheet with that on it.
I think we did that last year.
Yeah, I got to say, I think there's, any city in the state would just be amazed and proud if they had accomplished this much.
Okay, so what Tammy has handed out to you will be your work-plan draft to follow through tonight. We may not touch on everything, but at least you can take this home and read through it thoroughly. So John Morgan facilitated the department heads' retreat in December, and we went through a process of identifying where we believe Gladstone's focus needs to be for the next two years. The city council, though, is the ultimate decision-maker on our work-plan, and we've identified areas for the year 2021 and 2022. As you go through this document, you will see that if some are highlighted with a star asterisk, those are policy decisions that we believe the city council is going to have to be part of. The checkmarks are for operational projects, and that's where you're going to see where we spend a lot of our time when we're not going to be focused on policy. The last attachment is the work plans that we have for the Parks and Recreation Board, Traffic Safety Advisory Board, the Senior Center, and the Planning Commission. And we believe that we have tried to incorporate as much of the work that we feel we can reasonably get done from those work plans into this document. But given that we are still in COVID, we wanted to remind all of you before your wish list starts that we are still in COVID. And our number-one area of focus needs to be reminding that we want to return to pre-COVID-19 operations citywide as followed by federal, state, and county officials. And so with that, Kathy has provided a brief memo on the financial health of the city that we'd like to start off with.
Good morning. Thank you. You may remember that back in May, we made an estimate, an original estimate, of how we felt COVID was going to be impacting us so that we had a bit of a plan in place as far as areas we needed to cut corners, what we needed to watch out for. At that time, we anticipated there'd be a possible shortage of revenues of about 850,000. And we were hoping to offset that in the savings department as far as reducing expenditures in various areas also. So we're currently headed into budget, as you all know, and we're working on our income balances as far as getting started before the budget process. And with looking ahead, I've been doing some analysis on what our current year revenues are. We know what our fund balances were now with all of the completion of the year-end audit for 1920. 2021 has definitely shown the impacts of COVID. But overall, I think that, you know, the city is going to be coming out fairly well. And some of the facts that I am basing that on is that overall, our revenues have held fairly close to budget. And they even see the projections in some areas, such as our interest earnings is doing very well, vehicle registration tax, which we have not budgeted for because we weren't sure if that was going to be coming through from the county. So we are getting those funds. And then there's some other missing and missing incomes that we've received that have improved. There was a real fear that the state's shared revenues would really drop off. And fortunately, some have. Highway user taxes definitely down. Some of the other state's shared revenues are relatively stable. The sin tax, the liquor, the marijuana tax, those are doing very well. So that's helping. And so that is helping offset some of those other areas. The other one, property taxes, you would normally not see an impact to property taxes until possibly next year. Right now, we're holding very steady. We're doing very well with our property taxes. It's budgetary, it's nothing tremendously over, but it is holding budget, which is very good. And then our recent utility increases, the ones that were done last January, then the ones that are going to be implemented this January. Needless to say, those are tremendous help for our utility funds. The area that I've seen the biggest impacts are transient lodging tax. Needless to say, it has definitely taken a decrease in the people that live in town. Business licenses, those are down also too. Planning application fees, we've got a big drop in what has been processed there, as you can see. Court fines and forfeitures. We noticed quite a while ago that court fines were definitely down. So we've been working with the court, with the police department, and collections to kind of determine where we were using so much of the revenue on that. And so that is starting to pick back up. We kind of plug some of the holes. They did a, I'm sorry, Jackie, that program that they did just recently.
They did the amnesty program, which brought in quite a bit of revenue. Also, our police department is fully staffed now, so there's more presence and activity out there. And so we feel pretty confident with our course correction plan. The other big change that we made is we are sharing our court clerk with Oregon City's Municipal Court. And so that has reduced one of our FTE to part-time right now for the next six months. So, yes.
So all those little items together, you know, that add up, and we are seeing a lot less than we thought we would. The March 2020 utility billing reduction, that was a straight loss of 233,000. And that is where we basically build out the whole city at half of what the normal billing was at then as, you know, just an assistance towards COVID that way. In the grant funding that I'll talk about shortly, one of the things that is strictly disallowed is recovery of revenue of that, you know, that type of revenue loss. So it is definitely just a loss to the city that way. And then we did the Support Local Business Utility Rate where everybody was able to get a $15 credit for every $25 spent locally at up to a maximum of $45. We lost about $20,000 on that. There were a lot of people that were very pleased with the efforts. The March 2020, as they say, it spanned all three utility services, so that was for water, sewer, and stormwater. Staff has been tremendously partisan with this thing. They have been extremely careful about it, and the savings are showing throughout all of the departments. So needless to say, if we have less revenues, we spend less money, we come out singing the bottom line, hopefully. And currently, in the process of estimating the annual fund balances for FY 2021, for our budget planning purposes. And I feel like we're on a fairly solid ground going forward. The next six months will be critical as we try to maintain our continuity. The bright side of all of this. The thing that has been very good has been the personal grants that have helped to supplement our encounters to help the rest and some businesses in Gladstone deal with their personal financial recoveries. We initially got a state grant right off the bat for just under $8,000, and that covered a lot of the personal protection equipment that was purchased for police and fire and, you know, our first responders. We got a business Oregon grant. I think Jackie had touched on that. It was $50,000. We were only able to award $21,000 though due to, you know, with the businesses in town that were interested in it. But it was better than nothing. Needless to say, now, several businesses. The Corona Relief Fund, that is the big one. That's the CARES grant that was came down from the feds to the state, and then the state allocated it out on a population basis. And we received a total of $383,319 on that. It is administered by Department of Administrative Services, and they have done a fantastic job of pulling all of that out. Allowable costs are specified in federal treasury guidelines, and they're available to cover related personnel, equipment, and supplies, along with remote work technology implementation. So we've been able to foster that a tremendous amount. It's been very helpful. The funds, as I was mentioning, may not be used for revenue replacement, but they'll be fully utilized on allowed costs by the end of the funding period, which is June 30th, 2021.
And just to answer one question I received, Gladstone did not return any of the CARES funding. And then the feds and state extended it six months. So what Kathy is saying, we have now until June 30th, 2021, to utilize those funds.
And they will fully utilize. I don't believe in giving grant funds back. But they're there for us. And also too, Jackie touched on this, and it's something we've been very pleased with the results on. Part of that CARES funding, we were able to contract with St. Vincent de Paul. And to date, on that, we have been able to assist 39 families for just under $32,000 in assistance. And this program also will continue until June 30th. So we anticipate that there'll be more families that will be helped with the new city. They have to be Gladstone residents, and they have to be impacted by COVID in order to qualify for this funding. St. Vincent de Paul has been excellent to work with. They have a system in place. They know what they're doing. And so it's really been a very good partnership. So in closing, so far, the city's been able to navigate this very well. With the onset of the budget process, the timing's excellent for us to ensure that we are going in the proper direction and again, course corrections. We're doing very good. I have one question.
I have one question. On the St. Vincent de Paul, what's the cap for that? I'm sure that's not ongoing.
I think it's $1,000, I believe, for St. Vincent. That's not a city cap, that's their program.
That's their program? Okay, so do we have throughout the whole program a maximum of $100,000 that we can allocate for this? Or how much?
That is what we estimate.
$100,000?
And we're sending it to them in $10,000 increments as it's expanded during the foundation.
Okay. And then on the Business Oregon Grant, has that been closed out? Or can we still try and push additional?
It was a six-week program. And the reason why more businesses in Gladstone didn't participate is because they had a caveat that if you've already received funding from another pot of money, you can't access that. If they had not had that caveat, then we would have had a whole bunch of businesses in Gladstone.
The PPP loan that you couldn't secure that.
Yes.
No one got because of the.
And then there was a Clackamas County one that was running concurrently at the same time, so.
Question for Jackie. On the court fines and forfeitures, because of the course correction that we did previous, is the new judge aware?
I'm going to be, her first day is next Tuesday, and I'm going to be meeting with her, so she is aware. But again, we have to be very careful that a judge isn't as involved in revenues and expenditures because their mindset is different.
Right.
But those conversations we'll start to have. And that's why I think it's good for you to observe, to understand their philosophy on how they assess fines. So I think this is a good opportunity to kind of course-correct at the municipal judge level as well.
Okay. Not that we would pressure her into doing things one way. That wasn't what I was saying. But just so she knew the history of that stuff.
Ms. Counselor Alexander?
Oh, no, I don't know if it's a silly question. I don't know much of this stuff. But, so like where it says right here, this utility billing reduction, I know that helped a lot of people. And it does an impact to us. Is there like a rainy day fund? Or do we have any surplus that we put away? So like, maybe it wouldn't have offset that much that we can tap into? Is that, I don't know how this would be worked.
Each of the funds does have a reserve. And a lot of the utility funds probably have the best reserves of all of the funds. So it was affordable within the funds to be able to do this type of thing, you know, for the residents. We estimated exactly what the impact would be and how it would impact, as you say, the reserves of the funds before we made the decision, before we discussed.
So there is a cushion?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
That's her favorite word, cushion.
Yeah, well, that's. That's what it is, you know? Thank you.
Are we going to offer a Budget 101 class for people that?
Yes.
Okay.
We are, your next council meeting, at your next council meeting, you will be adopting the budget calendar, which will include a March meeting on Budget 101. So, yes.
So I have one question about the cushions for the utility billing. Is that cushion part of money that we're using to fix the infrastructure? And so we're just moving it from one area to the other? Or is it?
It's just overall.
It is? It is?
It's overall. You estimate what the reserve is on each of the funds and we have through policy a percentage that we have to maintain as a reserve. And so we always ensure at the end of the year that we are capturing that reserve. So this is, you know, it's overall in the sense that we have less expenditures in a lot of these funds also too. So it just, you know, we know that it balances out, but it's not taking particularly infrastructure into account.
So we're not cutting out any already moving project in order to?
Not at all, not at all.
I'm not questioning if that's what you do, I'm just asking.
Yes, I appreciate it.
But I will say Kathy is a finance consultant that has been with us almost three years now. She came in in crisis financial Gladstone. We could not be where we are positioned with our audit and our budgets without her. And I will acknowledge that given everything else that's going on, she had a personal medical issue this past year and she worked with the city of Gladstone and has done a phenomenal job. And the good news is, is that she's willing to stay on longer. And so as long as she is wanting to stay in Gladstone, then we are gonna continue to utilize her services. So we appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much.
You like challenges.
I do. Yes, I like challenges.
This was a challenge.
And I want to say to the new councilors, if you ever have any questions about urban renewal money or anything, Kathy, does she tell you, it makes sense? Like I wish she would have been like, you know, my math teacher in high school or something. So I don't know if you're open still to that, those types of questions, but you really explain that stuff really well. Yeah.
Thank you Kathy.
Thank you Kathy, very, very much.
Oh, and he, the man that needs no introduction.
He just blows through the room.
No.
Good morning, everyone. Everybody jump in?
Just jump right in. You're next on their top five recommended areas of focus for the next two years.
Well, let me say, you have a great consultant. I know John, he's highly regarded and you probably all know that.
He's already been paid, John, you don't have to.
You've been at lunch with us back then.
Well, good morning. It's good to be here, Mayor Stimpel, a member of the council. Jackie asked?
If you don't wanna talk, you don't have to.
Better.
Jackie asked me to bring you, do a summary of the housing efforts. I was so pleased to hear Jackie mentioned affordable housing is one of the top goals. I don't need to tell you, it's a severe crisis really statewide. I've worked with a number of communities and certain Gladstones on that list. In fact, the other day when I was preparing some notes for you, I saw that Gladstone is the third worst percentage, third highest percentage of severely rent burden renters. It's over 35%. So over a third of your renters are paying more than 50% of their gross income on their housing.
I think 57% is low to severely low. So I mean, you expand that out, it's terrifying.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, I'd say we're in a crisis here, as in other communities. So I probably don't need to tell you, some of you, maybe, most of you know this, the city of Gladstone does take this seriously. You have taken this seriously. In the last four years, the city has approved a number of important policy actions. The downtown revitalization plan, which included a number of developments, including the Trolley Bridge, but also zone equipment to accommodate higher density, I'd say moderate density, mixed-use development. The city undertook the code audit, the housing code audit in 2019 with help from BLCD, which was a funding source, which identified a number of changes to code to create more housing choice that aligned neatly with HB 2001. Jackie alluded to HB 2001 earlier. And that's the state legislation that mandates that cities, most cities in Oregon of any size or 10,000 are obligated to have more flexibility in their zoning codes. On top of that, the city, very recently, as Jackie mentioned, approved, it's just coming to the council for formal approval, the Housing Needs Analysis, which really reiterates the need, the lack of supply, especially for affordable and workforce housing levels. So there've been all these efforts. They're really all, in a way, on paper. Nothing happens until you actually change the zoning code. And that's what's gonna happen in 2021. Now that you have the downtown strategy, you have the Housing Needs Analysis, you have the Housing Code Audit, you have all these policy documents, here's things you should do to create more housing choice, especially for those of the lower in the spectrum, thinking spectrum. But we need to actually take the action, you need to take the action of changing the zoning code. So we're going to undertake that in 2021. Jackie is directing me to draft an RP to find a planning consultant to do this work. That work will build on all these existing policy documents. They're not gonna be started from scratch. Really, it's to take all the things that councils approved or blessed or endorsed over the last several years, so they now go fix the code to align with our policy initiatives. One very important note is that there, I think there has to be, the council has given us this direction, there has to be a strong community engagement piece to this. You may recall when the housing code audit, the advisory committee gave their blessing to the housing code audit in 2019, now a year and a half ago, almost two years ago. Their biggest recommendation was, yeah, this is all great, but make sure when you actually do the code change work in 2021, which is about to start, that there is significant community involvement in that effort. And it's not merely, you know, going through the motions of people like me talking to a bunch of people. It's really going into communities, including communities that have not really participated in the past in these large discussions, informing them, here's the opposite, here's what we're looking at, what do you think? So we all know that government processes can become just what I'm doing right now, talking to you. But instead, it needs to be informing people and giving them a voice. And again, all stress, including communities that are most impacted by this issue, which traditionally are not at the table. Example, the Mole Home Park, Jackie put me in touch with, I forget the name of the fellow who is there going to do the Mole Home Park. They should be at the table, because this is gonna affect them.
Is that Kim? Are you guys talking to Kim yet?
Yes, yes, thank you. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. I'm happy to go deeper dive into any of these policy actions you've taken or what we intend to be doing in the coming months. You'll be really as involved as you want to. I hope to see you. I know the mayor typically shows up at our community engagement events, but much more to come, really in the near future. February 23rd, we're gonna bring the HNA, the Housing Needs Analysis, for your formal approval, along with this community engagement strategy, just for your review and blessing. And then I think soon after that, we'll issue an RP and have the consultant in the way. Process will probably be sometime in April. So the summer, this year, is gonna be the time when you really start talking to the community, here's the code changes you wanted made to create more housing choice.
So all of these are gonna be Title 17 changes, so there's a very, very defined process that includes community engagement?
Yes.
So we can't take shortcuts. I mean, it's a very, very open, transparent, engaging process.
I'd say we probably even wanna go above and beyond, because yes, certainly, the Time 17, as you know, has a primary value, notice in the paper on that.
Yep, so it's, yeah, I mean, so there's a minimum we have to do, but it's already, I mean, we have to do it, we can't shortcut.
Right, right.
Okay. And then do we still have the first affordable housing project in Clackamas County with the funds?
That's my understanding, yeah. Yeah, that's great. I'll say too, that Gladstone has a really good reputation. When we were trying to get Metro to support funding for the Pigeon Hill Center for the bridge, they knew that we're not rich. We can't write a big check to Matt to give us their funds. But what we are doing, what you are doing, is aligning your policy initiatives with regional priorities, especially around affordable housing. So that's a good thing.
John, I have a quick question for you. What is, so the downward pressure on rental rates in city Portland proper that's been in the news the last couple of weeks now, the dropping rent rates in property, is that pushing the rents up in other outlined communities? Or are you seeing a leveling and then a balancing as all the rents are going up?
I don't have the fact, but I imagine it's more the latter. I think what, to me, the selling point is because of the regulatory complexity of Portland and now some of the dynamics that you're aware of going on in Portland, there's been more demand for housing in Milwaukee and Beers and yes, Gladstone. As a reminder, you know this, when Jackie first brought me on your team a couple of years ago, one of my first charges was to talk to developers, both for portable CDCs as well as market weight developers. They all said, I'd love to develop in Gladstone, but John's zoning code doesn't allow it, which is true, right?
Right.
And so your downtown revitalization strategy says, here's the things we need to do. But so I think you're gonna get off of median density housing development on Portland Avenue, which is gonna help the businesses, it's gonna create a more livable, walkable place. I just think Gladstone's future is really exciting.
So we're addressing the ADUs then, the zone change, is that correct? Because that was part of, don't we have to adjust to HB 2001? And I don't know what the square footage, minimum square footage footprint is for 2001.
Well, I know that the Planning Commission needs to make a decision on whether or not they want to address the ADU as part of this overall process, or go ahead and start that now. And that's the conversation we'll have at their next meeting.
So they're thinking about starting that now?
Yes, we are actually getting a lot of developers asking about it, and so we need to make that decision. It'll be part of this process, but we may need to start it sooner rather than?
It's hard for me to advocate for it for reasons, but by the same token, I think that's gonna be the solution we need, especially for infill and because we don't have property inventory in the town. So if we're really looking at some of this densification, I think a couple of things need to happen. One is that footprint needs to enlarge to meet some of the other cities that are surrounding us. And then two, I think the SDCs are gonna have to be addressed as well, because we've gone from $7,000 to $34,000 or $32,000, and that's gonna be prohibited. John, you know this, for development of ADUs, that's prohibited.
Well, didn't Milwaukee cut theirs? I mean, they gave a huge, I mean, a decrease in the SDCs for ADUs to try and?
That will have to be addressed as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for moratorium, I'm just looking for an adjustment so that it makes, so it's not cost prohibitive on the development. We want the infill, we want people to be able to utilize their properties. If they can develop it for $45,000, $50,000 and convert a garage, and it works for us from the planning side, we don't wanna be prohibited, because I think we need to do this. We talked about it in the community, we don't want necessarily, we've heard over and over, we don't want any sprawling apartment complexes. This is the way, and the mayor and I have talked about it for a couple of years, this is the way for us to actually get population density inserted throughout the city.
Or settled, yeah.
So as long as we're addressing it, I'm good. I just wanna make sure it's on it.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's on their work plan as a priority, probably sooner rather than later, and they do want to increase the square footage for an ADU.
Because it's what, 400 square feet?
400, 800 is kind of?
And Portland is what, 75% of the square footage of the main residence?
Yeah, it's 75 to 80, and I think they actually have a thick footprint, Peter or?
Yeah. And I think where the controversy's gonna come back out, remember downtown revitalization, there's those that don't want the high buildings, they don't want, you know, where's the parking garage for it to be built? So we have to work through that, which is why the community engagement strategy is so important to do that. So we think this is going to be a very important area of where you guys need to be focused for the next year.
Can I ask a question? When you say need strong community engagement, tell me what that looks like to you, just so I understand?
Yeah, I think, I think an important element of a good community engagement strategy, and you'll see this in my, we'll be bringing?
It's right here, the strategy.
Yeah, you should take a look at that, but, because that will flesh out what I would say, the very high level, but it informs people as well as gives them an opportunity to weigh in, rather than, I guess it's an education process. So here are my market dynamics, here's what's going on in the Gladstone housing market right now in terms of severely rent burden. Here are, here's what the state law requires. So, member of the public, that's the reality we're working within. So now here are choices on how we address that here in Gladstone. Rather than, I think, a traditional community engagement is more top-down, and I'd say token. So it tries to really engage the community and give them informed options and then weigh in on them. It also, you'll see in this paper, it wants to go outside the usual suspects. It wants to expand the constituencies that engage in these decisions. Because it's such an important issue, if this was the sign code, you know, you probably should talk to a few businesses and assign managers. You know, some community, but this is such an important issue, because this affects where people can live, where will their kids live? I have three daughters. Where, I don't know where they're gonna live, because Portland becoming, the region's becoming so unaffordable. So it affects a lot of people, so they need to have a real voice in that. I hope that answers how?
Can I add something to that, John, just having come off of a fairly extensive community engagement that was focused on underrepresented folks? Mindy, one of the things that John's getting to as well is, you have a longer, sometimes a longer educational component to that, to get folks who have not participated typically in these kinds of activities, to kind of ramp them up. John, do you agree?
Yeah.
And some folks are just kind of distant from the process in these communities, a lot of times you're focusing on working with their leaders in that community and then getting them to ramp up to the process, to make sure, to ensure that they have a voice, as John's saying. Typically, they haven't been at the table, so there is that learning process that we have to build in that whole long line of engagement.
Yeah, there's, sometimes there's a language barrier or a cultural barrier, like I might be intimidated from going to a meeting or coming in and testifying before you all, so.
It's not as fast, I guess is what I'm saying, it's not as fast as the typical meeting where everybody comes rolling in and they know the process and they roll out. You have a little more of a learning curve for folks.
So we're talking? I, well, can I, just real quickly, just building on what John just said, my experience is the barrier is trust. Because not only is it they don't trust you, but they don't trust that their input is gonna make a win of difference. So building that relationship, you're spot on.
Yeah, you put them in charge of it.
Time to build trust, some credibility of the process.
We did seven to nine meetings in the city of Cornelius with that community. And in the first three meetings was just really getting, building the trust and having them feel like, yes, at the end of the process, they were actually the voice in the process. And it's important for us to do that.
So identify people, personally invite them to the table, and then make that table happen, whether it be at a park, at a something, at some, but engage them personally?
I think the same about building trust.
No.
Well, building trust, I know in Rockwood, they work with the churches, they work with different community-based organizations, because that's where there's trust, okay.
Yes.
My, I trust my minister, when he says, we're gonna have this event, and Mr. Softgate's gonna come and talk about the changes of the zoning code. And so I talked to Mr. Softgate and he sincerely seeks our input, rather than just be sitting out a notice and say, hey, John Softgate's gonna present the new zoning code, hope you like it.
Okay.
Those people, you wanna approach the thought leaders of those groups, gaining trust of that individual then multiplies manyfold.
Yep.
Yeah, we worked with Central Cultural out in Cornelius.
Yeah, partner with?
Right, that was.
Have the trust.
Right, our partners were there.
So for Gladstone, I guess, like you say, the Mole Home Park, people like, that are at the community gardens in Gladstone, I know that lots of them don't live in Gladstone, but there are some that do, that kind of thing, the churches, we have a lot of churches here. School.
Right, partner with, with community-based organizations like, you know, Apano, speaks to the Asian community. Should I start over from the very?
And I think, Counselor Garlington, what you're looking for is coming to you February 23rd. It's the actual strategy that talks about who we're targeting, how we're targeting them, and what kinds of outreach are we going to do. So this is exactly what you're looking for.
Okay, all right, good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming on board and being such an amazing champion for us.
Yeah, oh, I am a big believer in Gladstone. It's just, it's a joy working with you. You have a great staff, so.
No, thank you. You've gotten so much accomplished.
Did we get invited to the?
Team up with?
Thank you, John. Meetings and things like that.
Have a great day.
Me too. Bye.
Thank you.
Okay.
We've been told that there's like a 15-second delay in the community room.
Exactly.
So we're trying to maneuver through that.
When you guys talk, if you could talk towards the microphone?
No, but yes, absolutely. It's the big picture.
Okay.
Not quite muffled.
We just grab it.
One hour in?
Five minutes? Five minutes.
Five minute break.
Thank you.
Well, next up on your agenda is one that we know you guys are all very passionate about. And, um, this is one that we feel like we're going to need some guidance on because Parks does not have the resources that we need to do all of the wonderful things that you want to do. And so we want to have some more conversations about this one. Um, so, but first I'm going to go ahead and have Jim kind of give you an overview.
Great, well, thank you, welcome, and I'm glad to be here to talk about all the fun things going on in the city. Um, with our parks, and as you know, because I've been here at least for five years, the funding of the parks has been a, a high priority, and it's been a challenge as well. Because it is a general fund, it's out of the general fund, it doesn't have its own revenue source.
It competes with fire, police, administration, parks, all of that.
Yeah, and previously the library, but anyways. So the Parks Board, I know Minnie's been part of that, and Mayor's been part of that. Um, we've spent the last several years looking at different funding mechanisms. And one of those that we are actually in the, oh, thank you very much. And one of those that we are in the beginning stages of is actually implementing a parking fee down at Melldrum Bar Park. And so we have a fee machine ordered, we just got orders this last week. We're in the middle of design to, to make that entrance very nice and where people can pay and residents get a free pass and just some of those details, I don't want to get into weeks too much. But that's going to generate some funds that will be dedicated to the Parks Fund. So that'll be the step in the right direction. Um, the other thing you'll work on, I'm sorry, I left hastily, I never did bring my notes for this conversation, but I'm going to do the best I can.
Do you want to go grab them?
No, that's okay, no, fine.
Okay.
It's, I can actually just take that.
You take my notes, all right.
But we are also, um, working on shelter, on fees and, you know, generating some revenue there and with our sports fields and stuff like that. Cause right now, well, the city in their master fee scheme does have some charges for those, it's very, very minimal, barely covers what you can, can you pay for.
And we haven't been charging.
And we haven't been charging, so.
And then COVID happened, and there's been no activity. But we're expecting in March to come back to you with increasing fees for user groups at the park.
Yes, yeah, so that's something else that's in the works. Also with that, if we start gen, when we start generating fees from the fee station down there, something that's going to be very important to do is a site plan for Melldrum Bar and Dolby. So when the revenues start coming in, what's the community want to see that park look like? What, what kind of amenities and stuff like that? So that, that's something that's on the list to get going on. Um, of course, the pickleballs, pickleball courts down there, um, those tennis courts were hardly being used in the past. And this pickleball community came in and they did a lot of the work and partnered with the city. And those things are getting used every day, sometimes even in a rain, pretty impressive. So it's cool to see, um, for the city that the amenity that we actually have is being used. So what part of that, they want to do another phase of that, and that's on the list here, to upgrade them, yeah, yeah, make them even better, because there's a lot of cracks and other issues down the drain, issues and all that, so there's, that, that's in the works as well. And then like Jackie mentioned, update our user fees for sports, though, which you talked about, so. Those are some of the high level things we're looking to resolve, some of the funding issues in parks. Um, we've got started, there's some things in the works, but there's definitely more, more to come. And during the, just to bring back another past thing that happened, when we did the site or the master plan for the whole park and all the whole city, there was a survey done within the community on their willingness to pay. And the, the majority of the community did say they would want to pay for it. So it's got, in my opinion, it's got community support to do some of these things and that down in the past, so. With that, that was kind of high level and bouncing around, I do apologize for uttering my notes in, my notes in, but blew them out. Word broke, my mind threw me off a little bit, so. Is there any questions or anything I can answer?
People, people asking me about, like, when you, you're talking about, so Oregon City, Westland, Estacada want to come play Gladstone, they're gonna, they're, they're saying, we're going to charge them to use that park? I mean.
It's a parking fee.
It's a parking fee, so.
It's a parking fee.
Yeah, so if you're going to park there, then you'll need to pay. And through the Parks Board process and the council process, that's going to be a three dollar a day charge. But you have the option to get a forty dollar a year annual pass.
Okay, so it's three dollars.
For folks outside of the city, correct?
Right.
Correct, so citizens of Gladstone, residents within the city limits, they already pay, you know, through their taxes and what's added for parks, the amount of general fund. So the idea was to get people who do not live in the city or not contributing at all to the park, of, of using it to pay. So that's correct, so you'll be, the residents will get a free annual pass, and then anybody else will need to pay.
I would guess my question is, how does, we, we from Gladstone, when we go play at Estacada, Glad, Oregon City, Westland, we don't pay.
Correct.
I mean, how, how are they funding their parks where, but that, and we're not that way? I mean, I just ask it.
Right, so for example, they're, they're going to have higher taxes to cover those. Or in some cities, they actually have a park fee on their utility bill, for example, and that's how they're being able to pay for it.
Which we don't have and never have had.
Okay, that's what the people are asking me, I didn't know, now.
No, it's, it's actually, it's huge, and that adding it to the utility bill is, uh, and that's a dedicated fund. It'd become more like a utility in that sense, and then it would have some funds.
Oh, I got it.
But do you want to do that? Do you want to add more on our utility bills right now?
I just wanted to know how they were doing it and we, we weren't, but now I do.
Or it's a district, or it's a parks district.
Or, or a parks district, absolutely, and then that would be an added tax. So other cities that are funding those, they're funding them.
So I think it's fair, though, to say, like, I mean, Greg's bringing up a good point. If we, if we're not generating the revenue that we need or we'd like to see, we may go back and revisit a fee structure, right? I mean, because I'm hearing in the community, we, we need to fund our parks.
Right.
So these are those two avenues, and if we aren't getting the money on the first avenue, then we're going to have to look at the second. And again, Greg, which is going to be while you're on the council.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay, that's good, that's, I mean, I've got asked this a lot, so you know, people are.
Sure.
So now I know, because it's not, we're not paying tax mandatory every month, so we've got to generate some kind of revenue, I get it.
Yeah, and some of the cities with very successful park and rec programs, Oregon City, Westland, for example, it's just local. You look, they do have those fees, although they have a district of some sort that can tax it. For example, the city of Westland, I want to say they're fifteen to seventeen bucks a month, just for parks.
Yep.
Oh, did not know that, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so if you look at the city's budget overall, and Kathy probably touched on this, it's pretty lean in the general fund. And that's what, that's where parks come down.
Okay.
Having a dedicated fund would help alleviate some of that.
Nice, thank you.
You, you have this gem of a park that is being used regionally, and they're not paying to the maintenance of that. The study that we did to implement the fee did not factor in that we were going to give residents annual passes. So we don't know how much of a revenue loss that's going to be with the study that came in. But we need about a year of generating revenue to understand, to Counselor Tracy's point, is this going to be enough, or do we need to revisit having a utility parks fee, which is not what we want to do?
No.
We also hired a public outreach firm to put education pieces together so that we can send it to our residents that says, this is how you're going to get your annual pass. And then we have another piece that's going to go to the user groups that says, this is why we're charging you three dollars, and this is how you get your annual pass. So all of that should be coming together by late March of this year. So we're excited about that, but there is a lot of details that go into implementing. It's just not go plonk a station down and start charging that we're trying to work through. And I do want to ask some more guidance on the pickleball club request because they did come to the last Parks Board, and they want to do fundraising to do the replacement of that. They are an enthusiastic volunteer group that if they want to go raise money, that's great. But to have them project manage that, they can't, it has to be city project managed. So some of the things I would like to get a consensus from you on is, does this rise to a level of priority where we need to make park staff focus on that? Are we willing to use the city's 501(c)(3) status for donations? So if they're out collecting money, that the city is going to collect those donations for them? Are you willing to amend your current pickleball agreement with them to say you won't sell that property for ten years? Those are, those are decisions I need from you to say, yes, we want to do that. And then we make that a priority, but something else falls off the list. And, and that's, that's the issue with parks, is there's so much we want to do, but we don't have the full-time employant, employees to do it all. And you'll see as we go through the budget process, we're going to ask for an employee, but it's going to compete against fire captain positions or, you know, police officers. And so we've got to make those decisions. You can't keep adding projects to our list to get done and expect that we've got the staff to do it. And so I'm hoping that you guys will be able to tell us, not this minute, but sometime today, if that's where we land, out of these items that Jim talked about, what's the priority for you in the parks to get done?
Or we can offer solutions, like a, a local government grant program comes from the state lottery. There's sixty million available right now, I sent this to Bill and Lisa Preble, and they've already got on it. So if we can offer some solutions that don't tap into our resources, that we can fix that, that's great.
So the other question to echo off you, Greg, and to you, Jackie, is, can, can the, anybody seeking out grant monies like the pickleball group, can those grant monies fund that project managers that are associated with the city? And does the city, is the city comfortable with that?
We have to look at the requirements of the grant, the council does have a grant policy. Typically, uh, the city staff and council has to sign off on anybody even applying for a grant because it's going to come, the city has to manage it.
Agreed, I understand that.
So, so you have to try to balance that, how can you let the volunteers do what they want to do? But there's still some city oversight for that. But whether it qualifies for project management, we'd have to look at the specific of that grant.
I'm just talking about the connection, so you're not using the staff time. And if somebody is a grant writer or is a project manager was able to benefit from that. I don't, Oregon Lottery grants, I'm not sure, Greg, if you can do that.
I think they have a big donor already.
If you already looked it up, I'll just tell you so everyone will know, my, my brother-in-law's brother is Scott Archer. He ran Parks Recreation for, in Clackamas County, and now he's the city manager at Ambie. So I reached right out to him and said, you did the parks, like he said, sent me this, said, talk to these people, they got plenty of money and they'll help you out.
Yeah, and on the grants, you know, just from a staff level perspective, grants are great to help funding a project, but then there's the management piece, which is huge, and then a lot of grants require in-kind work. For example, we just did the Melldrum Bar dredging project, we're, we're still wrapping that up, the paperwork, the stacks of paperwork. So in-kind work on that project, for example, is a little over thirty-three thousand dollars, and that's just in staff labor. So that's getting close to a half of an FTE.
There's no free money.
These grants are great to help that, but it becomes, it does become, so we had to drop other stuff that we were doing to manage that. So just, just keep that in mind.
Yeah, I didn't know any of that, so that's good to know now.
So I would say with the pickleball ask, where you need to make decisions is what I said. One, do you want, they want to go out and fundraise, do you want to allow them to use the 501(c)(3)? That means finance administrative times got to collect those monies, and we got to disseminate donation letters. Um, if they get the money that they want, then Public Works has got to go project manage it to make that happen. And that is okay, as long as you understand that something else will probably have to come off of this list. Cause we're telling you what we can reasonably get done, um, here. And so the other question is, do you want to commit to not doing anything with that property for ten years? Well, if you're going to sell parkland anyway, you got to go vote of the people. So I don't think that's an issue.
Oh, God, no. Not going to happen.
Is it cost effective, though, if you, you say you have to put some staff time in this and that, so you do? It, it, it does cost you a little bit. Long-term, all the people it brings, I've seen forty-five people down there for tournaments, you know? Brings into our city, does the revenue, it's going to offset what we cost us.
This is, this is what we say, you as a group advise us on what's the priority, and then we make it happen.
Okay.
So, so again, we're hoping to, that John's going to facilitate that, here's the priority. So be thinking about that, this is one area that we need your guidance on in the parks to do that. Right? Cool.
We've came a long ways in parks in the last.
Oh, my gosh.
I want you to have six more people, and I want to figure out how we can pay for that, because that's where I'm coming from.
If you think about it, when you say we need money for parks, the money is there, it's the people to do the projects that's not. So that is exactly what's missing, is how are you going to fund the additional staff to make that happen?
I have an idea.
Parking fees.
I have an idea.
Yeah, and then do you take away from fire, do you take away from police? That's the thing that, like, two years ago, I remember going, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
If you're, if you're going to have more expenses, you have to have more revenue. So, and we're all going to learn that very quickly in the next couple of months as we go through this budget process.
One of the things that I, just in talking, Greg, because I know you talked to a lot of people down at Melldrum Bar, one of the things I was really, uh, that was kind of an aha for me is that the percentage of people that rent the garden plots down at Melldrum Bar, the higher percentage of those users are not Gladstone residents.
Yes.
Which is fine, I love that we bring people in. But the fee they pay for that land to use it, plus a forty dollar parking fee is still less than any garden area around here.
We provide the water, and we provide water.
They don't do any of that. So like, if you go over to Lake Oswego, there's some garden plots in some of those parks that cost upwards to a hundred and fifty dollars a summer. They don't even get to use them in the winter, they can't plant a winter crop or anything like that where Gladstone has that ability to do that, they allow them to do that. So just those two fees, even if you didn't live in Gladstone, is still less than that.
Significantly.
Significantly.
What is the fee for a garden plot in Gladstone?
Twenty dollars a year, I think?
No, no, no.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
That was thirty-five.
I thought they were up to fifty.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but that fee does not come to the city.
No, it does not.
It goes to the, the.
It goes to the garden association. Um, what the city gets is a dollar a year.
I thought it was something like that.
Here's part of the problem.
And, and don't they have like a hundred-year?
No, they have a twenty-year, but it's like a hundred.
It's like a hundred.
Might as well be a hundred.
I think the minute point, though, I, I have to agree with you, I think that the fee structure for, for parking or for a season pass there.
Is dirt cheap.
Yeah, it's the minimum as compared to what the cost could be elsewhere, right?
What's it parked, what's it cost to go park above the mountain? You know, when you get ready and you're.
Ten, fifteen dollars just to park, and you haven't even pulled the stuff out of your car yet that costs you another thousand dollars.
So when there's pipes that are broken or the pump is broken, we pay for that.
And we just paid for that, that was a co, a time and a cost suck.
Yeah, we have.
But we only charge them one dollar.
Right, but you have to also, I, I believe, to bring people out of their home into nature is mentally, physically, all around, one of the best things that we can do for our community. I truly believe that, it's kind of like getting those kids back in school, back into recess. That's what helps our mind, body, and soul. So that's what I'm so wholeheartedly behind. And so hire those seven people.
Right. And just another useful or informational thing, when we were in the process of looking at doing this fee study, we did some studying down there with the past Parks Board members, sitting down there for a day, taking, hey, where are you from? And stuff like that. And believe it or not, the statistics are eighty percent of the users of that park do not live in Gladstone. All of Gladstone pays for that, so eighty percent of the people down there do not pay directly for the use of that park.
Not a dime.
You kind of look at it in simple terms.
Well, do we charge the people, like, when I went, not this last summer, but the summer before, I go down there one day, I go every day, but I go down there one day and there's this, the kayak place, they got a kayak thing sitting there.
Yeah, selling.
They're, they're sold out of kayaks, I go by every day, they, for two months, they're sold out of kayaks. Are we getting any of that revenue from them sitting at the, at?
We don't get the revenue, but they have to have a mobile vendor's license through the city to do that.
Oh, they do, okay, because then there was a food cart down there one day, and then there was a guy doing the shaved ice. And I was like, are we getting money for this, or do they just pop up and, you know, I'll do a hot dog stand or something?
But what we're getting out of that is barely enough to cover just our processing of that paperwork.
Yeah.
It's not like it's building our budget or anything, no, it's very, it's.
I did, okay, good to know.
We're not in here to lose money on everything that we do, we have to at least break even.
Okay, do you want to go on to the next item?
Sure, I did bring my notes for this one, so I'll be.
Kathy, I think that one, we can hand out a memo. Um, this is for nighttime reading memo we're handing out, not. Um, this is for nighttime reading memo we're handing out, not for reading here.
It doesn't make you go night-night?
We do have pictures.
Oh, I love the pictures, okay.
That's what it does to me most of the time.
So during our last goal.
You want to start off?
Nope, you go right ahead.
Um, so during our last goal setting, um, we were directed to look into some options for rehabilitating our public works yard. Um, this has been something that's been in the, we were actually looking at it when we were in the needs analysis for this police station and civic center. We also did a needs analysis for a thinking that, you know, we know the need is there, but we weren't able to do it all at once.
Has everybody been to Public Works?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yikes. No, I don't think I have been actually.
Really?
No, I've just.
Well, you need to call.
I should just.
Absolutely. And that invitation's open to anybody. Um, but yeah, so we, we spent the last year, um, doing some analysis work and looking at the different options, designs and potentials for starting the process of rehabilitation in a public works yard. Um, what I'm going to do here, you know, I'm not going to read this pervading, this is like Jackie said, this is something for you to look in more detail. And we will be talking about this in more detail later date. We just wanted a high level, just give you a brief summary of what's in the report. Um, so our current facility, for those of you who have been there know this, um, it's lacking in many ways. We don't have the adequate restrooms for our staff, we don't have the adequate locker room, shower, lunch rooms, and when we get these heavy rains, we flood. So those are just some of the high-level minor issues we have with our public works facility. Um, and another thing that, that probably high-level, most important is it doesn't meet critical facility standards. So in the, in the event of a natural disaster or a flood or something big, Public Works is going to be the ones that's going to be bringing the city back, supplying drinking water, getting sewage out of town, clearing streets, making roads possible and stuff like that. So with that, we could be out of commission, having to relocate somewhere to operate out because it could be down on the ground. I mean, the whole, the whole place could be, it just doesn't meet earthquake standards and stuff like that. Um, so like I mentioned, we did a needs assessment and we came up with four alternatives which are identified in here. Um, and I'll just list those real quickly. Um, one of them is remodel the existing facility in three phases. And the idea there is so we're not displacing operations during construction, but it does come at a cost. Um, the second one is remodel the existing one in a single phase. Remodel existing building while they're in a single phase, kind of rip the Band-Aid off approach. The third option is replacing it with a completely new structure. And then the fourth one is remodel a small portion of it to give temporary relief for some of the issues that I mentioned, like having a locker room, lunchroom, showers, adequate bathrooms, stuff like that. What you'll also find in there for each one of these alternatives are pros and cons to each. So you can kind of go through at your leisure and look at those and see what we've identified as pros and cons to each. Also in there towards the back is the estimated cost, which I would like to make a note, it's not going to require any additional taxes or fees. This is part of the big picture of moving the city forward, dealing with.
Say that again.
Yeah.
It is not going to require additional taxes or fees.
We want to make that clear.
It is actually, if you look at.
But the reason it's coming to you is because of the measures in your charter, measures 3395 and on section 48 and 49, anytime we spend more than a million dollars, it has to go to a vote of the people.
Yep.
Or we finance a dollar, it has to go to a vote of the people.
Yep.
So that was my last bullet, is basically three of those alternatives are going to require voter approval, similar to what we did at the civic center here. We had to go out and get voter approval for that. So that's really high level. There's a lot more information in that report. I encourage you to look at that. And, um, if you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer them. And when you're reading this, make notes, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them later, just to give you some time to, to guide us there.
I think it's important though, um, for, for Kathy to also talk about the financial picture that she did, that if the council wants to move forward with putting this on the November ballot, so that the people could decide if we want to do this, understanding that there's no new tax implications. Kathy has done some research to tell you what a 10, 15, 20-year direct placement like we did for this facility would cost out of those funds and whether or not she's comfortable with the city going into debt with those.
The one thing always to bear in mind whenever you're looking at debt financing is what are you bonding on it? What are you securing with that debt? And what is the conceivable life of that asset that you're going to be going out to bet for? Needless to say, with the public works facility, it's going, it would come on with a 50-year life minimum. And so we looked at 10, 15 and 20 years. Um, the 20-year cycle is the most affordable, needless to say, as far as the debt financing that's showing on here. We have an estimated interest, interest rate bumping it out a full percentage point than interest rates are running now, but we're looking at probably one to two years before we would even, uh, be in a position to secure that debt. This is a direct placement with a, um, it's called a bank direct placement. It's a very good interest rate and they're relatively easy to secure, as long as you have the credit worthiness that we do have to be able to go forth on something like that. So on a 20-year issue, as Jim was saying, something that would be able to be affordable within the budget, you certainly would be able to, we would be allocating it, uh, 10% against the general fund for the Parks Department. And then water, sewer, storm and roads would all pick up 22 and a half percent of that amount. So we're looking at something that is conceivably doable, absolutely. And, um, that's really about all there is to say about it at this point.
Yeah. So again, what you're looking at tonight are the items that we feel like policy decision needs to be made. And so if the city council wants us to move forward with updating our public works facility to meet the critical facility requirements, this would come back to you at a regular city council meeting for approval. Um, and what we're telling you is that yes, the city can do this, they can afford to do it, but it would require a vote of the people in November, which I think is good. Let the people decide if this is something that we should do. So are there any questions on the public works facility?
So my question is, is there any statute driver, um, for the critical facility standard from either the state or FEMA or anyone else? Is anybody driving us to?
Well, it's in your multi-natural hazard mitigation plan through FEMA and the county that it is designated as a critical need. Uh, the same was with the police department, which is why we had to get that filled.
So if we're not meeting the standard, is there a driver that, that makes us meet the standard?
Yes.
Well, what it does, if you go through, and this report from the county is very thick, but what it will allow the city to do is apply for, um, grants and stuff in the future. So what, one of the things for some grants, all occasions, do you meet this, do you meet this, do you meet that? And this is one of those things. Or, I mean, I don't have a list of those grants.
Sure.
Any grants that may not even exist right now in the future, if you meet this, it'll be one of the requirements.
Well, like with critical infrastructure, are there some grant monies potentially that are out there? Because I mean, I'm assuming that you're, you're mitigating certain liabilities and risk by having the facility up to that standard. Is there some money that we can seek out to potentially, you know, offset some of the debt service?
It's kind of like with our parks, going out and getting grants, we had to have master plans to, to go get those grants. This is similar to that, where checking out one of those boxes also that will allow the city to apply for grants in the future. And quite honestly, it's good practice to be, have your, have your facility up and run in a natural disaster, be able to deal with emergencies and stuff like that. That's probably the biggest concern. But as far as some agencies saying you got till the end of 2022 or else, no, I'm not aware of it.
Thank you.
So are you talking about grants to actually build the building?
Yeah, it's, it's critical infrastructure.
I didn't know if that's what you were talking about.
It wasn't. He was talking, I think, Mindy, he was talking about what we would have to do to qualify for grants by having the facility in place. That would further qualify us, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So there are or are not grants available to actually build a building?
The little bit we looked into that, there are some things out there that can help, but we didn't spend a whole lot of time. We needed to get, we needed to see.
And I guess I'm, I'm going to just say that with a new administration and a focus on resiliency across the country and with the fires and everything else that we've had to endure, there may be a possibility some federal monies are kicked free. And that's what I'm just, I'm just saying, if we, if we're smart, we really should keep our eye on that ball because I think that the, this administration is concerned about resiliency in the, in the country.
Well, and for what it's worth, um, because of the voter requirement, you're likely not going to qualify for most grants until you have that voter approval.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, that's one of those things that you'll need to keep in mind.
Thanks for that.
And when is that again?
November.
That, the ballot in November, not talking about it in November.
No, we, we would have to bring to you probably in April or May to meet the timeline to get it on the November ballot. Yes.
That's soon.
And you guys don't have showers now at all, do you?
No, as a matter of fact, the one shower they did have, had, had to be converted into a, a station for chemical wash-off if you get chemicals or that. So it's like got a big handle with cold water in case you get.
So that's a shower.
So that's.
Could then also have some, if we, if we had a better facility that had those things on recruitment and retention of employees?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Would you like, anybody's been over there or would like to go there, is that a place you'd like to show up every day?
Yeah. And that's been sort of an issue, right? Haven't we been, you know?
I know, we have guys that have stayed there for 30 years. Got some, some retention there.
Well, yeah, but they're going to be falling away and then, you know, I mean.
But to your point, some of the new recruits we've had over the last, since I've been here, um, there, there's been a lot that's left, you know, for better career paths.
Right, right. I mean, it's like the, the police station, I always sort of felt the same way with, with that too, when we were over down there.
Certainly after we flooded it.
Huh? Well, it's, it's, it's deplorable. They're in a modular trailer for five years. They have a box toilet out back. When they have seasonals, they don't have room for all of their employees. And what we're saying is, here's a way for us to move forward on this. It takes voter approval, but it's not going to be a, a bond or a tax increase for them to have to pay for it either, just much like we did with this building here. And, uh, outside of the fire department, that would be the last civic building for the next 50 years that we would be taking care of.
So if we did that, that would definitely be the messaging, because there's still people who, how can we afford this? You know, this one right here where, I mean, a lot of that.
And part of coming to you sooner than later for the, to meet them in November is having that period of time to message and educate.
Okay, I have one more question. Money has to come from somewhere.
Yes.
So the money is coming from the general fund?
No. No. The only 10% of the debt service going back would be coming from the general fund. And that's what we're showing on the, uh.
The last page.
On the last page. And that would be, an average annual debt service there would be about 47, or excuse me, if we went a 20-year issue, it would be just under 30,000 a year.
Through your finance.
Coming from the general fund.
Yeah.
And then from roads, water, sewer and streets, it would, and stormwater, it would be 66,000.
So brings up again Greg's point about lottery dollars. When I built Columbia County's transfer station, that was all lottery dollars. And we started at 2.2 and had to double the budget. And they were just like, when we went back to the ask, for the ask on 4.4, they just were like, sure. I mean, it wasn't even a conversation. So are we exploring those avenues? Because I believe lottery dollars will enhance your infrastructure for, for your municipality. Is that something we've looked at as well or?
Not yet, but I.
Again, Chad's point that if, if we go through this process and get voter approval, that will, that's the first step. And then you really start looking into the, into that. And if we get direction that this is a priority to work on, we can start working on that ahead of time.
Yeah, because I think from our perspective, that, that story should be told at about the time we're starting to tee this thing up for public approval, because we're going to have to explain to folks that, you know, it's debt service and we'll get to go out there for that money. Maybe low interest loan from the Oregon Lottery, but to Mindy's point, it's not part of the, you know, it's not a chunk out of the general fund and it's not fees and, and rate, recent fees, you know? So we're going to have to do this.
But it's not going to fall out from the air either. I mean, you have to.
No, you have to do the work.
Yeah.
And looking at it like that, you can look at these numbers in here as almost like a worst-case scenario, because we can supplement a lot of that with possible bids and stuff like that. That's probably a better way to look at it.
And if we have voter approval to get the financing, that doesn't mean you have to finance it. You know, it's, it's basically, if we do discover that there's grant funds out there, that would be used first.
Okay.
And then, you know, any balance that was left over, you could do a financing.
And the city has a pretty good credit rating in this.
Oh yeah, we don't go into debt for anything.
Yeah, with the bank qualified.
Is it actually rated at like a certain, like, I know like schools are rated at like a, you know, a double A or whatever?
You have to go through a whole rating process on, with Moody's or Standard and Forests and, and it's, um, expensive for one thing. And it's also usually not necessary in the dollar amounts that we have been financing at this level.
Yep.
If you go and knock that building down, it can't be done, there's no point, there's no point remodeling a turd. We built this building to fit our need in 50 years. We do the same thing over there. But when we knock that building down, it's been seized shops forever. Uh, what kind of issues are we going to have with?
Contamination.
I suspect it's going to be real similar to this site.
Cause there is a plume that's going that direction. There was a plume that was going that direction if you looked at the, the phase one report.
And so the beauty of that, knowing this upfront, because we didn't know a lot of that upfront on this building, is we designed to, if we can keep soils on site, you know, for designing the whole yard, that will help. But it is, it, it will be what it will be and, um, that's going to be part of the process.
And we also received Brownfield's money for this site to help offset the contaminated soils. So we know that money's there now, so we can apply for that if we have to remove contaminated soil.
There's a lot of pros and cons in there. You'll see, we talked just about that same subject that you talked about, of why you would do new versus old. It's a 70-year-old building, it's been on fire once, um, there's a lot of issues.
You always spend more money on a remodel if you need construction.
Well, it's a little more expensive to go new, but long-term lifecycle cost, probably not, you know? Because we're talking 50 years. If you remodel that building, are you going to get 50 years out of it? It's hard to say.
Yeah, the cost is minimal.
And the challenge of raising the floor with an existing building, it can be done, you can engineer anything, but it's kind of putting lipstick on a pig to your point.
A turd.
I was trying to clean it up.
So do you want consensus from us today or are we talking about?
I think John's going to get consensus later. We're trying to give you, and here it is. Now you get to go shopping, so.
The biggest thing is going to be educating the public. I mean, the biggest thing is going to be educate. That's an uphill battle because I hear, talk to people every day that say, and I know we're a separate entity, the school and all that, but I will never pass another bond in this city.
But we got the civic center.
I, well.
Yeah, it's education.
Can you start putting it in the newsletter and educating people like in the next newsletter? This is something Public Works was looking at. I mean, can we share this?
It might be good for us too to really illustrate the debt the city's in. We're not carrying a lot of debt.
No, because we never did anything.
That's important because I don't think people really understand that.
They don't. They think we're way leveraged.
We are not.
Okay.
No.
That's a good idea.
You know, for the civic center is all coming through from urban avenues.
Right.
And so the city is in excellent shape. There is a small balance left on an old water bond and that's all.
Yeah, because we never did anything. That is a great situation to be in as an elected official.
Definitely the story that needs to be told.
Yeah.
It's that proof.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
I think you have a fire chief coming on deck now.
Thank you. You guys have a good day.
Yeah, you too. Jim will be back. He'll be back.
I was going to say, he's retiring. Last time I saw him, he was still on crutches for crying out loud. I haven't seen him for a long time. I think it was probably since we did our last third year.
You wear too many hats.
She's the chief of staff. That's what we call her, the chief of staff. Yeah.
Chief of staff.
Hello.
Good morning.
How are you?
Morning.
I've never seen you.
Sorry, mask. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm ready.
Morning, councilors, mayor.
Hello.
Nice to see you.
I'd like to just start by reading the review that I put together so to give you some context to this goal. And then we'll talk some more afterwards and I'll answer any questions you have. The proud history of the Gladstone Fire Department has been rooted in the reliance of city resident firefighters and community support. Challenges of this model are upon us and we need to address the situations. So I'd like to just review, I'll do this for pre-pandemic and then we'll talk about what's happened since then. But the way the fire department was staffed and responded up until the last year is that, and this kind of goes hand in hand with the sirens, firefighters are alerted in the community when there's a 911 call. They respond from wherever they're at to the fire station, get on a fire apparatus and then respond to the emergency. So that's a, it's a very common system typically used in rural areas, but it's been in Gladstone for decades. And then since then, captains were hired and that would put one shift supervisor firefighter, a captain, on each of the shifts. And then they would be there 24/7. And then they would staff two people so they can at least get out of the station on a medical call. But if there's a fire, they would wait for that same callback so somebody to be alerted by their pagers or cell phones, come to the station and then they'd go to the scene. So that was the model up until the pandemic conditions. Excuse me. What happened after that was I switched staffing mainly to reduce exposure. And so with that model I just talked about, it was all call. So the pager would go off, everybody that was available would come to the fire station. And then that, and then out of that number of people, they would staff the rigs and go to the emergency. That has a potential for great exposure. If there was a positive exposure to COVID, then we'd have to quarantine everybody that was in that response. So realistically, you're going to take a couple of calls and we could be out of service. I mean, that was the threat that I was having to deal with. So what I did is we just scheduled two on-call firefighters every day 24/7 to be the captain. And so that way we staffed like more traditional fire department where we had three people in the station 24/7. And we do that still today to respond immediately without waiting for callback. Callback is also restricted only if we need it. So if there was a fire or cardiac arrest that took a long time or a drowning, then the supervisors, any supervisor can initiate a callback. So then we could have some extra people to either go help relieve, tell me firefighters that come to the scene, or provide additional manpower for staffing, sorry, staffing. That's the context of how we deploy currently. So it's how we were before pandemic, it's how we were before we had captains, and now we're currently just doing three people 24/7. So that's our staffing right now. So to continue, decades ago, emergency response focused on firefighting and rescue. This is another common question. As emergency medicine advanced, the responsibility of providing advanced medical care in homes and in the street landed in the fire department. And after September, the September 11 terrorist attacks in 2001, additional responsibilities solidified and landed in the fire department. The traditional and cultural name of fire department can be misleading and probably will never change. And I think I'm okay with that. But the duties and responsibilities will continue to evolve. As anybody calls 911, they just want help. And usually it's police, fire and EMS that have to do those initial responses and deal with those situations. Local, county and national standards now apply to recruitment, training, performance and the administration of fire departments. This has spurred scientific studies to validate the needs and changes in the fire service. And the results of these standards and findings and additionally, public expectations of calling 911 have impacted us. Community-based firefighter model is extremely difficult to sustain in a metro area city with multiple risk factors and increasing use of 911. To provide a service level that can be considered all risk is very challenging. Surrounding fire departments and districts have evolved to address these impacts by changing their staffing models, their operations and entering into cooperative response agreements or collaborating to meet those response standards. So that's a very basic review of what, how we deploy and how we staff right now. But to get into deeper discussions later this spring with each of you, we'll discuss what has happened since 2010 with a study that was done by ESCI, Emergency Services, something institute, and a professional organization that also resulted, that was in 2010, that we initially started documenting the needs and the changes in the fire service in Gladstone. And then in 2017, community analysis was done by a stakeholder group of community and fire department members that was documented, which resulted in a strategic plan and standards of cover. And the term standards of cover basically is, as councilors and as leadership, you direct me on what you want for coverage in your city. And I can, I can answer all the questions on how to make that decision. But basically, how do you want to staff and deploy emergency resources in the city of Gladstone? That's basically what the standards of cover is. And we're really looking forward to answering and talking about the details of the fire department then. But for now, that, I hope that kind of puts some bookends on what the strategic priority number five is for this coming year. So I'm happy to answer any questions now or when I come back in later.
I just have one question. If your calls are 100%, what is the percentage that is an actual fire?
So it's a great question. Overwhelmingly, medical calls are a vast number of calls, about 70%. I haven't done all the data for last year.
Okay.
Last year's a little odd because of the fires. We had quite a few fires more than normal. But overwhelmingly, our medical calls are higher, are higher numbers. And then it comes in two fires, rescue calls, mostly motor vehicle accidents, probably the second one. And that's part of what I did initially when I got here was did a risk analysis on what calls we've run, what community risk profile there is, you know, the freeways, the hazardous material transportation on our roads, waterways, drownings, wildland urban interface, and how do we fit into the bigger picture of the county, which is going to be a probably a deeper discussion only individually. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
How many members do you have right now?
We're at 14 working paid-on-call firefighters right now. We have three full-time captains, two chiefs staff right now. We have our fire marshal who just retired and then.
Yeah, 14?
We're at 14, but we'll probably be up higher. We have 17 and I think we'll be back up in the mid-20s here really soon because we have some, some people in the pipeline recruits.
At some point that we said, you know, the most I've seen there was 50. When I left, there was, it was going down. It was going down from like 40, down to the high 20s. But if people continue leaving something, we're doing something wrong. In two years, there's been no discussion in the city council about the fire department because of manipulation, deceit, everything else. We've lost such a huge asset of community members of just the way the volunteer department is, but we've missed this conversation for a few years. So we really need to have a work session just to talk about the direction the fire station's going, why the changes were made, why we had to mitigate, lie and deceive people. But we really need to have this discussion as a group here to stop avoiding the topic because I know when all this started, it devastated the fire department. The first meeting where they told we were going to pay chief, it shattered that place and that's when it started going downhill. But we've avoided talking about it, but we need to talk about it, figure out what's going on and how it's fixed up and if we're doing the right thing. But we really need to have actual discussion as a group about what direction we want the place to go.
Can I ask a question, Councilor Ripley? So when you're talking, I'm just trying to understand the timeline. When you're talking about this, it's not reflective of the chief's timeline. You're talking about prior to the.
It's reflective of what Tom.
Prior to the chief taking over. So.
I have no problem with Rick, but what I have a problem with is never having a clue what, even when I was at the fire department, we, all this was blindsiding the fire department. It wasn't a need of the fire department. Certain people were asked for these interviews that they talked about. They handpicked the people they asked.
Okay.
But it's nothing against Rick.
No, I was just trying to understand how long this timeline is.
I think we hired him into a disaster that was caused, that this council allowed that chief to do the department.
It sounds like it's a topic of conversation for us.
I think we need to have a work session to talk about what.
Well, I think.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, so.
Well, we don't. That's part of it too.
The fire department used to be about, you know, when we'd meet the high school teams at the freeway off-ramp when they won a championship and that's going through town with lights and sirens and everybody, you know, we, there was so much to be involved with. I never thought that there's actually a city here. I thought the city revolved around fire department for 28 years. Because that's all you seen. Everywhere you went, it was about fire department, fire department. You know, it was all about the community. People lived there. Not people that live up in Washington or in Bend and want to come in and pull a ship. So that brings another question. What percentage of your people living in Gladstone?
Thanks, Councilor Ripley. There's so many topics you just brought up that do deserve greater discussion and that's why we're working on those work sessions. But to answer your question, we have, I don't know the exact numbers, but we have very few that live within the city. And that's, that's a big issue.
That's a huge issue.
It is a very big issue. And to your earlier point about the term volunteer is, that's something that I think in 2012, I think that was brought up and it was a federal payroll standard. But we don't have volunteers. We have people that are compensated with a wage which makes it even more, more of a challenge. I don't have an issue with the term volunteer because it's a term of commitment by the citizens in this community. And, but the legal term is a part-time employee because we compensate them. That all reflects on to what Councilor Ripley is talking about, is there's been a shift in the community involvement. And what caused that? And I can go really into detail, but I can just tell you basically, it's the standards that are applied to fire departments in urban areas especially that have impacted a lot of this. And it's a, it's not an easy change.
I think you're missing much of the other picture. Something we haven't talked about that a lot of this was a setup. I watched things be allowed to fail by certain people there to accomplish their goal. One goal by somebody retired was, they asked them, why do you want to bring in these paid captains? He said, because that way when I retire, I can tell people, look what I did. Okay, that doesn't help the city out at all. But we really need to actually have a, just a discussion we've never had in two years as a group. We need to get together and actually talk about this.
So, Councilor Ripley, to your point, Chief Huffman is introducing the sustainability of fire service in Gladstone to all of you tonight. Your first work session will be the second meeting in March where we start having conversations about the fire department. But Gladstone has been committed to having its own fire department. And if we're going to continue to have our own fire department, there are going to be certain needs and standards of covers that this city council is going to need to support. And Chief Huffman will talk to you about what happens if you try to go back to the way it was. Your other options are you start looking at your neighbors at Clackamas County Fire to provide fire services. And I don't think that's what the people of Gladstone want.
I think the people of Gladstone would be delighted.
But your, your point is well taken. The work sessions start the second meeting of March.
So I have a question then. Were, were the volunteers 20 years ago not paid?
No, they were paid.
Oh, they were paid.
Like $7. When I started in 90, we got $7 a call. Whether the call was 10 minutes or 12 hours. When I left, it was like $13 or $14 a call. But they had to change it and they, even though it was that much per call, but they had to re, put a little extra timing to make it look like a time thing.
Uh huh.
Because the minimum wage stuff.
Okay.
So one call might, it might have been longer, but it goes, it would go in as, they had to play the numbers to make it all, all work right because of the whole volunteer thing.
Got it.
Changed it.
Okay.
But I made my mortgage payment off of the fire department for most of that 28 years.
I hear you.
Because I, 60 to 100 times a month, I'd be down there.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chief Huffman?
This is sort of off-topic, but has everybody been, has vaccinations been available to our firefighters? And has that happened for them?
It is happening.
Yeah, if they want to.
It is happening. You can imagine the logistical problem it is to deploy all these vaccines. But myself and our EMS officer, we are constantly talking with the county. We have, most of our people have been vaccinated this last week.
Okay.
First round. We still have a couple that need to be done, but.
We have to stagger it because we're a small organization that if they get sick, then we don't have coverage too, so.
Yeah, I knew there would be a way to, we'd do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can tell you that pandemic conditions, like everything else, like the long list you read, the firefighters have really been having their own and we have not had.
We've done great.
I don't think this is wood though.
I know. Where's the wood?
We have not had a COVID positive exposure on duty. We've had plenty of off-duty that's like most organizations have. But they've been doing really well. It looks really weird when we go on calls now. We're pretty much in a known suit and they do that for every medical call. So it's, it's really interesting. That's all I can say. And they're doing great though. The workforce that we have is doing great.
Quick question. During the fires and all, you know, everything that we were having to manage in the, into the summer, the strain of that to the department, how did you feel interaction with, how did you feel about inter-agency interactions and did things work out for Gladstone or were we additionally stressed to some level because of coordination?
Yes and yes. I can tell you our working relationship with our surrounding departments is exceptional.
Okay.
And I can tell you that Clackamas County is going through a lot of change right now. And even through that change, we have a great relationship. And I don't see any issues specifically to the fires. You know, my, my stance is the city comes first and our coverage is always primary in my mind. So I don't necessarily first out go on, request to go somewhere in the state on fires, you know, when we do the state mobilization, because we don't have the depth of staffing right now. But in an emergency like that, you have no choice. And so we restrained like everybody else. We had our on-duty crews get pulled away out of the area to help with all these fires. It was really chaos for the first 72 hours. And, but it all worked out really well.
Well, yeah. I mean, I think you guys sent folks up to Estacada and that night, Tracy texted me because of the fire there on the Emmer property, you know, which was explosive and quick and could have been a disaster.
And that will be for greater discussion at our work sessions. But the reciprocal for that is that we have the coverage from other departments from 12, 10 o'clock that's coming into our city. And that would be the, part of the meat of the discussion is the depth of our ability. And that was kind of the issue in Estacada that we can talk through then is what can you really handle as a fire department? And that was really well experienced last September is nobody can handle that. And we didn't really get a handle on it until we have California firefighters here. It was a bottom line, so.
Wow.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
For years, Gladstone was with Childress County. And we'd be on a big fire force urban city. They start clearing everybody else out. They, you can say it on the radio, we're going to leave Gladstone here because they got plenty of coverage in town. And that's the way it was all the county. Gladstone, we'll leave them, have them clean everything up because of our manpower and we need to get back to that.
And that's what we'll discuss. The standards and conditions have changed over the decades and we have really no, you'll provide the direction. I'll give you the condition.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
So John, we just hit all of our top five. Cause after our department head retreat, John said, pick the top five. But we still have departments to go through. So I look to you for guidance on how you want to maneuver through the rest of this.
If you can get Colin to talk fast.
And we have a police chief.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
Well, we're up to, it's 2:00.
11:00.
I was like, what?
No, let's go ahead and, but we'll correct you if we do real fast.
So do you want us to go ahead and bring Public Works back in?
Back in?
Yes, because now we're going through the departments.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's go and ask.
All right. That would be Jim's coming up.
And didn't it really light again?
Oh, they just checked it all night. Yeah. And then the next morning, they had a little residual, but to lose everything, not clear.
Oh, yeah.
Jerry, he doesn't.
He's going to insurance money.
That's exactly Terry's like, what do I get?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, so you were actually not Public Works, but Parks and Rec the first time.
Oh, he's back with a different hat.
Yeah, different hat. Okay.
Oh, we got a couple missing.
Just Matt. Just Matt.
I'll try to be as quick as I can covering six different departments.
Is it, when was Budget 101? That's in March? Yes. Okay. We will have your budget calendar for you at the next meeting, so you can put all the dates on your calendar. Ooh, fun. I don't like the dates, plural. Well, there's only two budget meetings scheduled, plus the orientation. So you all know that you're part of the Budget Committee also?
I didn't know that.
Yeah, you are.
Other duties are assigned and called again.
Okay, well, I'm for it.
Other duties are assigned.
Okay.
All right. So I'm going to try to go through this as quick as possible and then open it up for questions. I wanted to start out with just a little bit of history. Most everybody around here knows that, you know, the city's gone 30-plus years of being very reactive, not giving a whole lot, whatever you want to call it, but it just really didn't do a lot. Prior to me getting on here in 2014, the city decided, with it through its elections, to start doing something, being more proactive. So with that, they started doing master plans, rate studies, SDC methodology, all these things. Really, it's building the foundation for a successful and long-term, more importantly, more efficient operation. Because now you're, you're not being reactive. You're, you know, it's like getting the roof on your house. And, oh, it's a 30-year roof, not touching it for 30 years. And then all of a sudden, you gotta replace the, all the structure underneath because you didn't maintain your roof type of thing. So just going down through some of the list of things, talk about that. A few examples are, you know, we did five master plans in the city, in the city utility rate studies, SDCs, design and construction standards. The city's never had those, believe it or not.
Can you imagine that? Oh, my God.
So, I mean, that's when you'll see in our monthly reports, we're, we're out working on an AC water line main, for example, and then power. You know, it's just, that's a real crazy example, but there's a lot of.
A lot of that.
Been working, trying to set the foundation for, talking about the facility improvements for the whole city, as a matter of fact. I mean, if we got this building, then Public Works as well. Rideaway management, so we actually inspect and kind of keep a thumb on all the private utilities. PG Northwest Natural are damaging things. We make sure it gets done, and that's part of that rideaway management. Development review and inspection process, so we don't end up with a situation where we get our power line. They actually follow our standards. We need to make sure that things are done right. Looking at our staffing needs to get the things accomplished that are on our to-do, and that's our goals. We've been building a lot of relationships with entities near us, whether it's cities or other utilities and stuff like that. And it's been very helpful. For example, working with Water Environment Services on this INI study. That is, that's huge because we partnered with them. We have really good working relationships with all of our neighboring entities. Lot of IGAs we've improved, mutual agreement and order, that's huge. The city's been overflowing raw sewages to the river for many, many years and have been fine several times. And so we met with DEQ and we came up with a mutual agreement and order that says the city's going to fix this issue. And we're in that process now. It's a five-year plan. We're in about two and a half years of it. And we are doing the INI study right now. So it's going to tell us where the issues are. We have a pretty good idea on some of the big ones, but we're going through the whole system and trying to figure out why we're overflowing here every time it rains. The first part of that study was doing a smoke test. And it was amazing. We had like 235 hits of smoke coming out of catch basins, roof gutters on houses, out of the ground.
Just weird stuff.
You know, and so those are all things that are going to be fixed. And what they're going to do is they're going to look at the biggest issues first, and that's what we're going to start focusing on. So hopefully later on this year, we'll have the majority of that work done. And by the end of the year, hope to have a plan on starting to address those things and stop them flowing to the river. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. Some of the stuff we have come, for history, but some of the stuff coming up, we're going to be working on is the whole quad water services, IGA of Perm One, which Jackie mentioned earlier. We talked about the INI study, the West Clackamas Sewer and Waterline Project. The reason why we got that one the high on our priority is we think that is also contributing to our INI. Because basically, again, no standards and no inspection, we found down there on the last leg of that line that's dumping in the pump station access, has a big hump in it. So that line surcharges back all the way to our overflow spot. And so that is most likely contributing. But we pulled out five-gallon buckets of grease balls and stuff in that thing. It was actually choking it down. And so we're out there on a monthly basis cleaning that line to keep it flowing as best as it can. Over the last year, we've been designing that. We're actually reviewing the contract language right now. And we're going to hopefully have that in the summer, so that'll be a big step in our direction. We applied for a community development block grant for ADA ramps, and we did get that last year. And that will probably start this summer. We're in the middle of identifying those. And we're going to do about 10 of them. An ADA ramp per corner runs approximately $10,000 a corner. It's very expensive. Barclay Storm Line, we're going to be working on that. That's a line back here to do another piece of the lake that we just did as part of this project. We're actually building our storm system backwards here because of this project start, we're actually at the mouth of it. And we're kind of building backwards. So the situation we have right now is the line comes down. It's designed to go all the way to the Clackamas River, but our system before wasn't really installed deep enough. So we have this line put into the right elevation. It actually does about a four-foot jump right now to get into the existing one. So we're going to build another piece of that, and that's going to gain the system about two feet. And so then over time, we'll use more of that. So that's another piece of that. Webster and Kason Head Crossing, you'll see that near the goals there. This has been something that's come up from the Parks and Rec Board and traffic safety as well. That area is very dangerous. People driving through there, and there's just really no official pedestrian crossing. It's actually identified in our transportation system plan, so it's just, it's all part of the plan, but it's became a priority. So we're going to try to make that a priority as well over the next two years. The Melton Bar Fee Station, we talked about that. Other birds, we're, we're getting ready to line up a 2021 slurry and crack sealing project. We do that every year, so we're in the process of doing that. We coordinate and partner with the City Hilt Pearl and many other cities, so we can get a really good rate on that because of economy and scale. So that's a, that's quite the process, but it really, it's going to, the way we like to look at it is we're going to try to protect what's stable out there. People do often wonder, just, you know, why we pick the streets we pick? Why aren't we fixing this street over here that's all just a mess versus this one that's still in good shape with slurry sealing? Because that's not worth saving. It's a waste of money to put paint, in a sense, down on that. We're trying to protect the streets and get more like that than they're saying that. I'm just saying some of this stuff because these are questions that we tend to get. And I'm sure you guys want to hear it from the community. Hopefully it'll help you deal with those questions. Our three reservoirs in town do not have proper fall protection, so our field staff is not able to go up and inspect those on a regular basis like they're supposed to. Oregon Health Authority requires certain things, and one of those is expecting those on a regular basis. And we just don't have that access right now. So we're in the process of designing some fall protection for three of our reservoirs. Five-year capital investment plan. Now that the final rate study, our rates were implemented, now we're going to be able to start doing some capital improvements. We need to actually make a plan on what, where's the best place to spend that and start projecting out on what we can do. So that's something that Finance and Public Works will be working on over the next couple of years. And Design and Construction Standards, yeah, we have them. We did them in 2017, but we haven't updated them since. So that's something that probably needs to happen because things change often. So that's on our to-do as time allows. So I think I'm, what, are you having a tear?
Oh, you're fine.
With that, if Jackie has anything to add, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I need to be clear here. Jim has been here five years. All of this work has been done under his leadership in Public Works. Jim retired in January, and I have hired him back as an independent contractor. If he leaves this organization, none of this stuff gets done. We hired a Public Works Operations Manager who is just now learning to take over the day-to-day management of the department. We probably have two more employees that are looking at retirement. We had one that just retired. And so Jim deserves a lot of the credit for cleaning up the Public Works Department and our infrastructure needs over there. And so I just wanted to be clear. In order for Jackie to be successful, I need Jim here to help me through the next year to get some of these projects done. And I just really appreciate all the work that you've put into this. So thank you.
That means, then maybe he should stick around until we get the new buildings over there. I do have one question for you, though, Jim.
Yes.
Kind of technical. Intersection of Hereford and Ipswich, or Hereford and Beatrice and Ipswich and Beatrice, whenever it rains or hard, we have mud coming out the street. Those aren't lines. That's just groundwater. But that mud coming out, with that base being shot, does that make more, is that more of a challenge, more of a cost when you go to fix that road? How, how far down do you have to dig to get with that base being gone?
So to answer your question, there were a lot of questions, there were questions there. But yeah, that road's shot, so we wouldn't go out and slurry seal that. It would need to be repaired. And as far as how far do we dig, we don't know until we start digging. You dig until you get to solid ground. So those are the kind of projects that we're going to start looking at more so now, having some more resources to do that. As we'll now do in spot repairs. So what we're going to have to start doing is we're going to be doing the spot repairs of the slurry sealed streets because there's, you got a good street and all of a sudden you just got a little bad spot. We'll fix that one bad spot, slurry seal. We'll probably get another 15-plus years out of that street, and then we can move on to others. And that's, that's another example that I don't know how much of the streets, the whole things like that. What I've seen for a lot of the side streets, and maybe not the major streets, is this town in the past, put a street and they basically did a oil mat on dirt. And then they did a slurry seal, then they crack seal. And it's just, it's just not the right way to do things. You need to dig it down. You need to build a base. And, you know, that's why we have standards now. And we would have to go down and do that. So without doing some more flooring in that, I'll tell you that that's probably one of countless situations like.
So it wouldn't really matter if you got on that right now for five years?
The damage is done.
There's no base there. You got to put a base in.
Don't, yes. The only thing that would prompt us to get out there quicker would start becoming a safety issue. You know, where it was running out real bad, people dragging their cars, or it was causing other issues, we would get on it sooner. But that's part of, I think about four years ago, we did a pavement analysis where we went around and analyzed every street in the city. We actually have a plan in this, the best way to use the city's resources on how to attack this stuff with what resources we have. So we do have a plan. I don't have it memorized, but we do have a plan to most cost-effectively address those issues. And surprisingly, slurry seal, crack sealing is like the number one thing to do. Protect what's worth saving. So you get life out of that, and then you start devoting some of your resources to actually reconstructing and doing streets. Clarndon, for example, we went in there and did, and why did we pick that one? It had issues with every utility, the streets, the everything. So we actually put in for a grant to do all six blocks. We got two. But we went in there and we dug out, we put in a base, we did water, sewer. We talked with, we got with PG, Northwest Natural, and anybody else that was in the ground said, "You got to get it fixed because we're, this is what we're doing." And so with our franchise agreement, we have that plan with them. So that street there is like a brand-new subdivision.
I'll go find you.
To be, what's that?
I'll try to.
Yes. And to be honest with you, I would say probably 60, 70% of the streets in Gladstone need to have that same thing then.
But we have safeguards in place to not have the perfect storm of Clarndon.
Yes. So Clarndon, Clarndon was a little complicated because it was a grant, and the Clackamas County actually managed that project at the higher level. We did the inspections and stuff like that. And that, and you do get contractors that may not perform to the level that's in the, in the contract, for example. And you fight, and you fight, and you fight the whole time. They have some extenuating circuit with, I mean, a whole lot of detail. The, that contractor had a lot of circumstances come up, which are very, very unfortunate. It did not help either. But we are learning. We, you know, the city.
We will never do that again.
Good, good.
So we do have some, we, we change our policies and processes all the time to make it better. Will we have issues? Probably, but hopefully not those same issues.
But we also didn't have control. Clackamas County did, and it was on a local street, and that's what was difficult about that, yeah.
Tell us what Tracy had to do.
I did, I guess my question is, and it's kind of echoing what your conversation with Councilor Ripley was. Jim, is, you know, at what point do you look at condition of the street? I'll just take an example. Cornell lifting a lot of the park, Wetten Park. I mean, progressively now, we're getting to the point where we're having, you know, I mean, it's right by your house, right? We have two and a half foot wide potholes. There's no longer any concrete that's laid down in the bottom of that or any asphalt. It's gone.
Right.
And you have multiple potholes going up that hill. So what we hear from citizens is, when, when is enough enough? Or what, at what set standard does the city look at the street condition? You just said safety is, is going to be an indicator and a trigger, right?
To get on maintaining it quicker, but.
Well, and I guess the question is, so you said you've done an inventory, or we've done an inventory of all the asphallic surfaces and concrete surfaces.
Right.
So I think the citizens would probably like to understand how the choices are made to, like, fix Cornell Avenue, for instance.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? So I think we need to have that information as we're sharing information with our citizens because they're asking that question.
Yeah, and on our, and on our streets website, Digging the Public Works and Streets, we have that book in there. Again, that's a, a real nice read if you're interested. But also, another piece that comes into that, thinking very efficiently and realistically, is, and I don't know that street, for example, the exact details, but you got to look at utilities underneath as well. We don't want to go in there and dig that down basin and go all this other stuff if we have a water line or a sewer line.
It has to be replaced.
Or any of that you need to replace. So where the city, and this is part of this capital plan we were talking about, a five-year plan, is looking at all water, sewer, storm, streets, and look at our private utilities out the tube. Get the underground stuff done, and then what can follow is the street. You want the street to be the last thing you do, so you're not digging it up again. And one of the other things why I'd really like to get on Design and Construction Standards update, we need to put a moratorium in there for these new streets. We do not have that. So for example, we just did Clarndon. Someone could come in and say, "I need to, I want to split my lot, put in some more services." We need to have it. And we can't say they can't do it, but if they're going to do it, they're going to have to repay a big chunk of that. So they're not taking away from the integrity of that street. So there is a lot to pick in the streets, and we have, so we make that a priority because we need to replace a water line that actually may have a lot of life in it versus a street up there that we have water quality, fire flow issues, integrity issues with AC water line. You know, so it's, it's a real balance. And this is what part of that plan's going to do, is set the city up for a successful future as far as get the underground done, do this, you know, kind of what we did with Clarndon all at once. And that was the other thing that was difficult with Clarndon, we did it all at once. It was a, it was a very long project. So I think I wandered a little bit.
No, I mean, you're spot on. I think it starts, it, for me, it just daylights back that folks may not agree with the decision-making. They need to understand how the decision.
Yeah. And, and to be honest with you, what would be helpful for us is we document, when we get a call for a street issue or something like that, you get a pop-up request or whatever. So that is one of our decision-makers in the future, where we have the most issues at, and that helps us. So if somebody does have an issue, someone's encourage them to call and say, "Hey, there's a puddle out here." "Dink, there's another checkmark. Dink, there's another checkmark." And so that's going to help us decide this street or that street in the future. It's one of the many indicators, but that will help as well. So encourage someone to call. It may not be like magic and the road gets fixed, but long-term, that's what's going to get, that's what's going to get it moved up quicker.
Okay.
John's got questions.
Jim, a question for you. You have design, you have project management, you have inspection. Are you doing that all in-house?
Yes, we have a, we contract with, for city engineer services.
Right.
So, so that person helps with the design of it.
But you're still deeply involved.
But we do the inspections and project management and all that stuff. We're doing it in-house. We do have one consultant that's also helping with some of our bigger projects that are, you know, like Melton Bar Fee Station, for example, helping manage that with a, with another firm that specializes in that design that our engineer firm that we have expertise for.
But for the most part, you, you stay busy.
Oh, 30 years of trying to catch up in Public Works.
Yeah.
Yes. And thank you for that point, is that it is all our Public Works.
Right.
Trying to do that, yeah.
You know, and on that note, you know, we've done, the city is impressive as heck. I've been in the, in the city business for thirty years now, over thirty years. And this city has got more done, not just in public works, but the city as a whole than the other cities I've worked at for eighteen years, for example. It's insane. It's impressive, and I, I, I'm, that's what's exciting about it, actually getting stuff done. We all may sit around and have disagreements or whatever, but honestly, big picture, you sit back and let the city get the stuff done. It's pretty cool.
Mm-hmm.
And that's exciting.
I just go back to the, ten thousand dollars for an ADA ramp? I mean, we need them, you have to have them, but doesn't Portland Avenue have all of them, or is it somewhere besides Portland Avenue?
No. So ADA, this is a, I know enough about ADA ramps to be dangerous. It literally changes. This project, for example, the ADA ramp requirement down on this intersection, you've probably seen that ADA ramp get replaced twice.
Okay.
Because for one thing, we didn't put it in for standards. But what we, and we didn't have them, when they replaced it, they didn't have to put them into the current standards, what was on the plans when it was adopted at the time. But they change every six months, and they are half a degree off. Or, I'm serious, a half a degree off in two foot. It used to be like a four foot level. Now you got a two foot level, and it's a half a degree off. You're tearing that thing out. And so just around the whole region, that's the estimate, you can pretty much figure about ten grand. Yeah, maybe one would come in at sixty-five. No one might come in and buy it fifteen grand, because you gotta buy it property. Because you're on somebody's private property to make the, the, the slope. You can't be over a certain angle on your ramps, and you have to have landings and all this stuff. And all of a sudden, you need more property, or you gotta come out with a road. So it's, it's really, really complicated, and honestly, it blows my mind. It's just.
Well, I was just wondering, I know we got some money coming from the revitalization from a grant. I mean, can you use any of that to upgrade these ramps if need be, and then not spend our own money? I like to say money.
Well, we, we have a grant to do ten ramps.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's the, but we do have a match. We have to put some money towards that. Which, there is a requirement for some of our gas tax money that has to go to that type of stuff. So you'll see in our budget, there's a line item on there for bike and head improvements or whatever. So a certain percentage of all our gas tax money has to go in there. So we do have some money to at least make that match. But no, we got a hundred thousand dollar grant to do ten ramps.
Perfect.
Yeah.
I have a question for you, just because I do not know the answer, and if I was at home, I'd look. The, you said to call if you've got a problem with a, a, a street prob, a street problem. Is there anywhere online to be able to go into the city's website, fill out a fillable PDF, and shoot it off to you guys, rather than me having to take the time on my nine-to-five job and spend a half an hour on the phone trying to explain to somebody what the problem is outside my seat, outside of my street, when?
I would love to spend a half hour on the phone with you, so you're welcome to call.
We have spent hours on the phone with our.
So we do not, at this point, we do not have a fillable form. But what I would recommend is, we have a contact Public Works, put it in a simple email. You can put all the information right in there right now. One of the things that would be great to do is to have a work order system that actually is online. But that's amongst all this other stuff, you know, where is that? That's on my bigger list, if you want to hear that, but that's down the road a little bit. But they do have some really awesome programs out there for that. But I think the best thing right now, simple email. You can literally go to our website, click on Public Works email address, and type in email and pottle such and such.
Maybe a hyperlink just on the website, saying, you know, click on this, and that way you're not having to look for it.
Right.
Portland has.
I think on our, I mean, there is a, you can send it to the city as a whole, and it'll hit us. I mean, if you want it to be simple.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And they do a great job. My water meter was this high. I sent you the email, two days later, they came and set it right down level.
And you know, we get.
Not since becoming city councillor.
No, no, no.
Yeah, now you're going to get the special.
Well, and there's not a pothole in front of your home we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
But no, you know, we used to do the sticky note thing and everything else, and somebody would just call you randomly, and that, that doesn't work so well. But an email or a call in the front office is the best thing, because they're right there. We have a work order that we fill out when someone calls. So it gets in the queue and it doesn't get forgotten.
Right.
That's the best way to do it versus hitting a guy out on the street, hey, there's a pottle down the street, you guys mind looking into that?
That's what we do all the time, and it never gets back, and you're like, oh, I didn't know.
I guess for me, it's just kind of, here's my list of things at home I have to do, and I generally get to them in the evening as opposed to during the day.
Sure.
And rather than call you at home.
Right.
You know.
Right.
It would be easier for me to be able to, but, mm, okay. I didn't know that that was an option, so if I didn't know it, maybe it could be a little bit more.
Put it in the newsletter.
Yeah, no, we could.
The website's getting great. I love it.
It is getting better.
It just keeps improving.
And we're never going to be done with that. We're always improving. It is.
Yes.
Your ADA ramps, those yellow pads you put in there?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have to put those in?
The pads, the landing pads?
Yeah, the little yellow anti-slip.
Oh.
And when they get wet, you fall on your butt if you step on them?
Absolutely.
You have to use that.
That's a requirement there for blind, for being able to feel those.
Is there something different that'd be used that's not slippery?
You know, there.
If you have no shoes on, and you step on those things when they're wet, you'll go down.
There may be, but again, those rules, six months ago, they probably changed what they have out there.
I always walk around.
Yeah.
My dog does the same thing. He'll walk on, but it'll.
Well, I notice these ones out here, which is pretty new, when they have those pumps, but they have the little traction built into the top of them too. You know, so I think they are improving all that stuff. But like I say, literally ADA is, it's a, there's a lot to it. A lot to it.
Great job, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, are you really leaving this?
He's done.
He's coming back in.
Well, my, just on, you know, for me personally, you know, PERS, it is a real good program back in the day. You know, I took a huge cut in pay to come work in the public sector back then. But it was because of the retirement. So retirement was good. So when I got my thirty years in, I did the math, and it just made sense. Am I ready to completely retire? Absolutely not. I'm going to do something. So as long as it's a win-win, and I'll, I'll keep up the city out for a while. So I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Awesome.
I reserve the remainder amount of my time, so.
Are you?
We have a bit of a dilemma, because the reports and your questions and discussion are taking a lot of time. And we had hoped to be on to the council's strategic discussion by now. How many more department heads? One?
We have a senior center and a police chief, finance, myself.
Oh, my God.
But you guys can also read. You know, we wanted to get through our, our five big ones.
Yeah.
So it's up to you. I do think you need to hear from Colin and the police chief.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, let's do that and ask them to be really, as quick as they can.
You want to ask Colin to be?
Colin.
Hi, Colin, sorry.
I'm timing you.
That can always be quick. I can start with your questions, concerns. I can let you know right off the bat that my main priority this year is to save and purposefully renovate the center. I mean, that's giving us back to that operation safely and long-term, not just short-term, but long-term. So that's my main priority. And there might be a time where I have to talk with Jackie, and Jackie makes a decision that it requires her input. So I don't have any specifics to that right now, but I think at some point, you could possibly see that. I just can't foresee what that is right now. That's my main goal. Assessment to consider expansion of services to a broader segment of the population. So I want to say first outright, I have no intentions to step away from senior center services at all. The center will always serve seniors, and that will always be our primary mission. What I am after is opening a discussion about the possible rebranding, renaming of the center at some point in the future. And the purpose to that is, as the current population ages out of the center, the baby boomers are coming in. Baby boomers are not seniors, and they'll tell you that every single time. In fact, my ninety-year-olds are not seniors. So my aim is just to make this center more appealing to the population that we serve across the board. Not just older adults, but younger adults and kids to whatever possibility that we can. That's my main purpose in moving forward. Even with pandemic, I felt that we've got a lot of stuff done still. Last year was a productive, you know, successful year for the center. We got a lot of accomplishments. I was able to, instead of replacing the stove, which is still my priority list, but that was repurposed to a freezer. I wish we were fortunate to do the COVID funds. So again, that was another strategic big hit to us. The new van, we got a new minivan, but that was currency one hundred percent of the foundation. So again, no city money came out to pay for that. And we accomplished the painting of the center, which was a high-ticket item as part of the just bigger picture for the center as a whole. And moving forward, I'm working on revising the nutrition coordinator position. It's an outdated job description and position as it is right now. So I'm working with Nasi and Jackie to work on that over the next year, as we look forward to bringing a cook back in to cooking hot meals and providing those services. The expanded services and programs and activities. So when we discuss that, I'm looking at ways to bring in more revenue, more cost recovery for the center and its programs. I'm still working with my liaison at the county on what kind of services I can provide that allow, that are allowed within the contract, the social services contract, but are not part of it, to recoup funding. For example, a fee for delivering meals to non-homebound clients. So those that don't apply, or excuse me, are not eligible to receive homebound, but still want to receive it, is there a way I can charge for that fee? You know, through the contract without violating any type of contract or stipulation? That right now is unknown. We're still looking into that, and we will continue to work on that. Create new revenue streams for the senior center through changes to the facility rental policy and older adult recreation programs. I believe we visited it at one point, but there was no decision made final. But I'd like to open the discussion in this year of bringing the alcohol policy to the center, which will provide us better access to Harden's RV facility, which is a large revenue stream for the center as a whole.
Thin tax, there's that.
There you go, woo-hoo.
Currently, the last time we discussed this, it was to discuss the liability, the two million dollar liability rate. Now we need to also revisit and talk about possibly bringing alcohol, allowing that. And the liability, we're hoping on that. Expanding intergenerational programs, that's something that was already in the works with the Gladstone School District, and we had a program going, and we were starting, and then COVID. So we had to solve that. So once that is all done, and school's back in session, and everything's going good, I'll revisit that with the school district, and we'll move forward with that. And that's at the high school level currently, but I have intentions of expanding that to middle school, elementary, and of course, the kindergarten next door. Finally, is the exploring the path of the national accreditation. And I want to kind of bring this together with the name change potential, discussing that. Again, I want to reiterate, we're not going away from senior services. We're just looking at the name of the center. And this won't affect a potential accreditation process. It won't have any impact on that, because our primary service will be the seniors in Gladstone. What's your opinion?
He's shooting the hip. What's the name? Real fast, what's the name of it?
Gladstone Center.
All right. I think it's a great idea.
Or the other, the other one that the board talked about was the Gladstone Senior Center.
Because me and my mom get this discussion all the time. She's seventy-three.
And she's not a senior.
She's not old. I tell her, you're old, because I'm not old.
I have eighty, ninety-year-olds that say, they call me and say, I'm too old to go to the senior center. I'm not a senior, or I'm not a senior at all. I'm too old, I'm pissed with that. And I also want to take a moment to thank the mayor and Council Ripley also, for their both here work with the center, and making sure that, you know, the seniors are taken care of. Everybody here has done something at some point, and I appreciate that. But I just wanted a moment to thank you and you, Council, for.
Yeah, I'll give you my personal opinion real fast.
Yeah.
I think that's the most important department in the city.
Thank you.
I think police department's important, but I have guns, so. Hopefully, I can get more old people, they can, they, they need our attention, even though they don't want to admit to it. But I think, I think that's an area where I would like to see ten times the amount of people showing up down there, and why we don't have more, maybe it has to do with the name, and that could help out a lot. But I think that, that your group is really key. Anything you need, always be there supporting, maybe with the seniors.
And I'm going to continue to ask on the entire council to talk with their constituents and encourage them to visit us. And I always tell people, you know, I don't necessarily have all the answers, but I do have the resources to get you to the answers. I do have that ability. So that's why I always share with people. You know, I may not be able to get you the exact transportation services that you need at that moment, but I've got a resource that does, and I get you that resource. Same with food, same with social services, referrals, everything like that. I have the ability to refer, and I got the networking ability to make that happen.
What's the biggest need that has the biggest benefit right now to the center?
Just your continued support to keep us operational, and supporting Jackie and her work. And I gotta also mention too, that Jackie's worked really hard to ensure that you're fiscally off to bringing very responsibly of the senior center. So you should, I, I thank her, and I want to make sure that that's clear. She's very supportive of keeping staff employed, and allowing me to go out to find, bring this lifeable one with the food pantry and the food box program with the county. So, yeah, that's, that's what I need the most, to have the most direct impact, and you communicating with the constituents about what we do. Because it's still surprising, no matter how much communication we do and reach out that we do, even before COVID, people, there's a senior center in Gladstone? Where is it at? Well, we're that great building in Portland Avenue.
Yep.
That's what you want. So that's still there. Get out when you're out, talk with your peers.
We need to have more parties there as soon as COVID's over.
Absolutely.
Every month, we need to have a party.
Absolutely.
Every month.
Colin, Salem changed the name of its center maybe ten years ago.
Hundred fifty plus.
Right. And I wonder, I mean, I have no idea if that made a difference or anything. It'd be interesting to know.
It did, because they also incorporated a new model down there that allowed them to do that, and as part of a larger recreation program within the city stadium. And they also do daycare for Alzheimer's patients.
Oh.
Which I've looked into, and it's.
Risky.
Risky, and it's not profitable. You won't do it for profit.
Oh.
Absolutely. You break even if you're lucky.
I've got, I've got somebody for you if you want to do it.
Any questions?
Thank you, Colin. Thank you for everything that you're doing.
Abby, quick?
Let's press on to our last.
Please. We're gonna, yep, we're gonna skip right to the most important person in our organization, the police chief.
Yeah, I'm not a poor.
Wait till Colin leaves the room before I say that. What an incredible year for our law enforcement, our police department. So John Schmerber has done an amazing job in Gladstone. We are lucky to have him. We're proud of him. And so we're going to have him go over his aspirations for the next couple of years in the police department.
I have one. You guys probably had a, played last time today, it's getting pretty long, for sure. But over the next couple of years, I have some ambitious goals I'd like to achieve. I think they're aligned with, with some of the things that I'll talk about, like a strategic planning, engagement, opportunities, engagement with our priorities. Everything still surrounds our four priorities, which are to the Gladstone Police Department, which is one, community engagement, crisis intervention, domestic violence, traffic safety, and then all that, community engagement. crisis intervention, domestic violence, traffic safety and all that, community engagement. I think you guys heard me say those four things probably over and over and over again for a while. So when I look at what we've accomplished over the last, last year and seven months, eight months, it's been a great deal considering the pandemic, considering the social justice issues that are going on and just everyday work, every day, the community and ensuring public safety within the community. When I first arrived here, I think I speak clearly with this year than I could last year is, you know, I had to assess the organization, assess what the Gladstone Police Department was, what our capabilities were, where we needed to improve or where we were excelling, but could they sell even higher and it raised the bar a bit. And I think we've done that. And I think we've done that through the help of all the departments and Jackie. And so it's a kind of a big team here, so it's been very, very good to work in, environment to work in. So when we talk about the police department and stuff we've completed with regards to ordinances and park rules, we've achieved those, so those apparently were a long time thing. We were able to achieve those and work with some community members to do that. The accreditation piece that you'll see that's on one of the goals, that's, that's a huge priority for us because that's really industry standards. That's best practices. That's, not that we're not doing that now because we have Lexapro's policies, which are, which are our national standard of best practices that go in. There's attorneys working for Lexapro that ensure those are updated and with constitutional rights that are specific to Oregon too. To make sure those are all in place, but more importantly, that we're following our policies, that we have demonstrated that we're achieving those goals and that's how we get accreditation. That's why it's so important. Especially today when you have an accredited law enforcement organization that needs best practices. So that's our number one goal. And we started that already. We've got, we're in the process of that. The bonus about that is we have an intern working with us and we call him EZ. Because Elias is his first name. But he, I said that wrong, but anyway, I'll continue on. But he's an intern through PSU. He's a senior. He's a criminal justice major. But the bonus is he's a Gladstone High School graduate and he lives in Gladstone. And, and so what a great opportunity for us to have in the police department, to have a local kid come in and do an intern with us. When, at a time when law enforcement agencies or internships are not available because of COVID. And so we made the adjustments. We created a safety environment for him, for him to be in there. And he's excited. We're excited to have him. He's going to be in the field and so we did about 150 hours of him and then we get him on a play and maybe in the future when he graduates, when he's a senior, you know, maybe there's an opportunity if he chooses and we choose him to be a fit here. Because we talk about fit, we talk about Gladstone and so far, it's a great kid. He's a great kid. So we're excited about that. So that's the piece on accreditation that we're moving forward on. By 20, by the end of the year, we anticipate being accredited and hopefully sooner. It's ambitious, but we're trying to accomplish that. And if you're not even about me, I'm very ambitious. I get forward to put the brakes on sometimes, you know. It's hard for me to do, which is what I'm trying to work on. Our strategic plan, that's another, another big thing that you're going to see that's completely. We did do our internal, advanced planning session. And so we're actually working on, we've done one internally. That's where our values, that's where all our goals are set. We, we looked at three different areas that we wanted to make sure that we had a plan on. But the phase that we're struggling, despite COVID, we haven't been able to get the community. And so we want community outreach, we want community input with regards to what the police department should look like and how we should address issues such as community engagement, such as traffic enforcement, such as code enforcement and what those expectations are, while at the same time balancing those. Because another, another plan for the next two years is our citizens academy. And frankly, I, I don't want to do an online, a Zoom academy. I think the first one, it just doesn't work. And so the goal over this next year is to get that academy, the, the, the teaching points and lesson plans all complete and ready to go. So when COVID is out, we can roll that out and roll that into the, roll that into the community room and get the citizen academy going. So there's a better understanding of what your police department's doing, understanding of why we do certain things, they'll ask questions, maybe get some good points. And yeah, so there need to be a lot of fun things that people want to hear. It's all going to be in a controlled environment. It's all going to be controlled, so.
We did laser waves.
Dive with that.
See?
Ambitious.
But you know, you know, part of that is, and I'm hoping is our elected officials participate. So they have a better understanding of what's going on, how policy's met, how we implement our policy. And that's what EZ is doing. You know, not only is he learning about our organization and learning at a law enforcement organization, but he gets to go out in the field and see how that's implemented, see how we put those policies in effect. So. Those are some big things. Another thing is our media outreach. I promised that we would increase that and we have to traffic safety between Facebook, between Twitter, and we're looking at doing more now. We're looking at saying, you know, we, I've talked with another volunteer and looking maybe putting some video, giving some video, virtual tours of the police department, virtual tours of certain things. It even could be the city, you know, the city side or public works, whatever, but getting, getting that piece going. And I know it's ambitious and I get excited when I start talking about this kind of stuff and but it's going to be a lot of hard work at the same time. And we only have so much time, so many bodies. We've still got to maintain our standards, training standards, maintain our philosophy and really dig in and dial in to fine tuning our everyday police work. And that's what we're doing today. And a lot of the stuff doesn't seem to be real big, high quality what we're doing, but what we're really doing is dealing with how we communicate and working with our approaches and everything else that goes into the de-escalation portion, which goes into our trainings and everything else and getting the police department up to speed on, you know, the certain ways where you can point and shoot on the range and yet you're qualified, right? But that doesn't really tie into what we're really doing into the field a lot of times, which is finding other ways to train that are more cost effective than you do. And that's what we're doing. And so we're slamming that pretty good and pretty hard and developing plans and plans are underway right now on how to do that. So. A lot of, a lot of real good stuff, but a lot of stuff is restricted COVID that I want to do with the community at the same time. So getting back, I'm trying to think, I think I've pretty much covered everything but the mini code. Piece of it is, is, you know, one thing you'll see on there is like our exclusionary process or our, our camping ordinances, illegal camping ordinances, that we'll go to a work session because although we have ideas and legalities of it, you may have some opinions on policy and how we want to do this. And, you know, so we'll give you the best recommendations. And so I think in February, I think there's a work session on that. February or Mar- uh, February is, February is our work session on that, so we'll touch on that a bit. We'll touch on, you know, as I'm looking down, I'm forgetting just a couple. Our Neighbors Helping Neighbors is a volunteer program. Is everyone familiar with the Neighbors Helping Neighbors? It's kind of a big deal and we've got a lot, I think we're up to almost about 20 volunteers right now, which is nice. A company donated their lawn mower for us. And so, so we hope in the spring that's fully implemented, even, even under public restrictions. So right now is not a good time to get volunteers out there, but, but that's going to be fully implemented and still working with our schools on school safety. And, and I'm, I'm in contact with our school superintendent and working and, and we'll see, we'll see what that goes. And I understand that there's bills in the house right now and, and things with regards to law enforcement and participation that we just need to overcome still. But I do see our SRO program is critical for community places. I think, I think that engagement is very important because it's not a pipeline. It's not what it's designed to do. It's designed to ensure that people and kids don't get into that pipeline. Just the way we participate in the juvenile diversion program and all this. Let's not put kids or youth that get into trouble that don't really need to be in the system to get help. There's other ways to get them help and, and move them forward. So a lot going there. And then of course you'll see some notes on here on a landlord form for code enforcement, on, on tenant type activity. And, and we've got plans in place, working those plans. And Sergeant Jim Lee who runs the code enforcement group, he is very familiar with, with those programs from his, his time working in Gretchen. And so he's going to be helping put that together. So and speed codes on this and other one with traffic safety. And we've also accomplished a lot of goals with the traffic safety program too. So with that said, I covered a lot, I think.
You did great.
People have questions, but I'm here to answer any questions if that's what.
I have a question.
Sure.
How are, how is, is the morale up now that you're in a nicer, better place? Are you finding that people are wanting more to come to Gladstone possibly to work with you and the department based on the fact that we're a more inviting place now? Maybe, you know, not mold filled?
Yes.
Are you getting better applicants when you're asking for them?
We've got great applicants.
Okay.
We've got great applicants. So difficult question to answer. Yes, the building, huge plus.
Okay.
Huge plus. When I came here, I knew this building was coming, right? Walked into the old place. But.
They needed mass.
You'll find that I'm just unfortunately brutally honest about everything. So that's my fault. Maybe I don't know. But, but the applicant pool, we're still selecting. You know, we're, we went through 100 applicants to find one applicant that we hired. On one case. And we went to another and got just the bonus of lucky on another that are perfect fits, that are doing absolutely fantastic in the field. Up to the point now, through the succession stuff that we're trying to accomplish, where I don't ever want to have to go outside for a sergeant again. You know, I don't want to ever have to go outside for a lieutenant again. I think right now we're built and we're moving in a direction where that doesn't have to occur. That all becomes internal now. That's internal movement. And part of that is taking care of your people. Part of that is ensuring that they're, they have every tool possible to do their job in the field and do it to the manner which we expect here in the city of Gladstone. Because every community is different. And so that's been my goal. That's been my task. Some of you that are on my hiring board, y'all ask me about that. And, and I've done my best in under two years to get that accomplished. And, and I think, I think we're close. We're there. Now with regards to what to achieve for succession plan, you know, that's up to, it's up to the city manager, you know, but we're ready for someone to take my spot right now. Just honestly speaking, we just need more time. You know, we're a young department. You know, we may be 30 years old, 33 years old, but we've got two years along, which is, it's a big deal. It's a big deal. So, but I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, I just, I guess, I want people to, when they leave their job, especially for a community as small as we are, that they say that they work in a good place for good people. And I just, you know, I want to hear that and I want to see that.
And again, I think, I think your police department, like in City of New Jersey, your, your police plan, everybody working here today wants to be here. They're very passionate about the city of Gladstone and they've done nothing but demonstrate that passion day in and day out. So we're always going to make mistakes. We're human beings.
Right.
We're going to make mistakes. But I think we have a lot of support, community wide. I think we have a lot of support internally. I think we have a lot of support on this council, but we're not going to ever take that for granted. We're never going to take that for granted because like I said in my, in a few of my comments on my monthly reports, we're always, every day we're going to trust. That's our goal. That's our motto going after. We have another motto, but that's mine. We're, every day we're going to have to trust the community. Otherwise it's, you aren't taking people for granted.
So keep us posted on the citizen police academy.
Yeah.
I went through the last one that we had. Oh my gosh, it's so much fun. Other than the coroner's office meeting one, that was awful. But the rest of it was awesome.
I want to ask my standard question. Has, has the department been vaccinated for, has that been made of?
Yes, yes. So we received our first shot. We're same, same positions by far.
Okay, so same because he sort of looted that it was like, it was tougher. And I thought it wasn't Clackamas County coming in?
Yeah, yes. Our days and times were the same. You know, the, I'm having some issues right now with regards to timing and everything because if, if people get sick and I can't, I can't put anybody in the field, I've got problems. I've already started making strategic plans, reaching out to like Oregon City, different agencies. I shouldn't say the names of public names, sorry. But just to support one another.
Some people, yeah.
Yeah, some people to support one another in the event that has to happen.
And specifically inauguration last week, he wanted to be fully staffed. That's when they were trying to vaccinate our team. So we had to stagger it because we wanted to make sure that he had coverage during that event.
Yeah.
So. Quiet.
Yeah, no, exactly. And we were out. I mean, we're on force. There's a lot, a lot of cops out there.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of cops talking to a lot of community members, visiting. Not, not visiting, which was, which is nice.
Keith, how many sworn officers do you have on the force right now?
Uh, right now we have, well, 16, 16, including myself.
We're fully staffed now.
Yeah, we're fully staffed now.
Yes.
Because, and two's coming out of training. So a sergeant will be coming out of training in two weeks. One officer's coming out of training here within the next week and a half. And the other one will be, will be a bit, will be a little bit long. He's a poop.
Does anybody live in Gladstone? Any of the officers?
Everybody's close. Pretty much everybody's either, either living in Gladstone or really close in Clackamas County.
Do they drive their car home?
What's that?
If your officers live close, are they allowed to drive a car home?
No, no, we have a, created when I got here, a creative fleet management system here to, to assign cars for everybody to drive home. Would be awful expensive.
Don't you think it'd be a little safer if something did happen and you need officers, if they had a car at their house and then just speed in their personal car down to the police station, you get your car?
Yeah, well, it's.
We have 24-hour coverage, so.
Yeah, it's.
Well, if something happened like right now and you, and you'd call all your officers in?
We wouldn't need to because we have mutual aid. Oregon City would come over or Clackamas County would show up, Milwaukee, and vice versa. So there's a lot of mutual aid if we need that. Then if we need to start calling people in, then it's a stretch of our time doing that.
I always like when a officer has their car home because you go to a neighborhood and there's a pop car sitting there. People don't mess around with the neighbors. I had a state cop that lived next to you when I was growing up and never had anything happen on our street.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chief. So quick question. So somebody reached out to me about camping, you know, and so we're not seeing a prevalence of that right now. I mean, I'm not noticing it and it seems like it's really on the boundaries. Am I correcting this assumption?
Yeah, sure. And, and the whole purpose of us bringing this up is making sure our ordinances are aligned with the laws and constitution and everything else in, in the event we have to go there.
You know Stephanie Rossen, I think, you with Metro, she runs the RIT program.
Yes, yes, yes.
So she, she's been kind of talking to everyone and just trying to find out like what the policies are. She'd asked me and I said, actually, I think that the chief has a pretty, pretty good policy and that they're working with folks and it's respectful. And so.
Yes.
That's what I relayed to her. She was going to reach out to you, but I mean, really if you go across, around the city, you don't see that prevalence. Like, for instance, like you're seeing in Oregon City, New Orleans and stuff.
And we do a good job about ensuring that that doesn't happen within, within the guardrails, but also giving out, you know, support. So we work with, we've got a, we have, we have two prolific, you know, houseless, homeless individuals that would cause problems. And so it becomes a drain on calls for service. We started working with nonprofits and we actually got them housing through what we're able to do. So they're not, and they're harmless. They just concentrate on, drain on our services.
They're busy.
And then one of them, I bought a couple hamburgers at McDonald's and he was out of our hair for a couple of weeks. And I can buy you up pretty cheap.
Yeah.
How many people do you have on a night shift, just out of curiosity?
You know, typically, typically we'll have two officers on average on every shift. So you got two, you know, sometime during overlap, now that we're staffed, we're going to have some overlap officers when everybody comes up training. So you may have three to four, sometimes five, depending on the day. And so, but, you know, but that five. And so, but, you know, but that five, that, 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 that's our command meetings, that's, that's where we get internal business done on those days, too. So, there's reasons for that type of scheduling.
I was just saying, like, I know, like, Tracy's husband struck up broken into, and so I started watching my monitors. And I got the camera, and I can look, maybe once a week, and there's people coming up on bicycles, my bike's trying my door handle. Now, I'm going to wait up one night, try to catch up. You know what I mean? It, it'll be from 2:00 till 4:30 in the morning, and you just get up and look at your camera, and you're like, wow, there are people just driving up and down the streets checking the door, you know?
And, and they do, and that, I, I think you just touched on, you touched on something big when we talk about the community working with the police. That's a big deal. And, and, and that happens. We can't be everywhere.
Right, no, I understand.
And, and, and so that, that's important. So those ring videos you get, or, or, you know, I don't recommend it, but, you know, we've had people, you know, homeowners grabbing suspects and holding on to them.
And you don't sit there.
Tracy.
So, yeah.
Well, thank you, Chief Smurber.
Thank you.
Now, when you look at the ring, and all of a sudden at my office, and I see how many people go and look in my office window in the middle of the night, it's like this thing where, like...
Sometimes you don't want to know.
I don't know if they're looking at the cat, or what it is, and then they must...
Good job, yeah, thank you.
Are you hearing?
Yeah.
You're going to get left out.
Well, I think it's the laundromat next door, so they're like doing their laundry in this nighttime, and they're not sure what to do.
Oh, you're welcome, chief, guys.
Thank you.
Geez, you got a prostate, bro.
All right, we're going to reconvene properly at 12:30 and get to work. So we can get out of here by 8:00. Do well. Cowbell.
That was a trick.
Sort of. Where, what sporting events do you see something like this in? Exactly. Came out of Austria and Switzerland, imagine that, all the cows, and that's the deal. So this, this actually happens to be a US Bank replica or whatever, but I've been to two Olympic Winter Games, I do have official builds from them. And I tell you, I, I use this to gather groups because it reminds me of Lillehammer, Norway, the '94 Games. A town of 16,000 people put on the second largest sporting event in the world. The largest being the Summer Games. 16,000 people.
Wow.
21, think of it as 21 world championship things in two weeks. And they pulled it off. And it's just remarkable when, yeah, it's, it's just remarkable. You know, what they were able to achieve as a smaller community, but coming together, putting the resources together, great project management and stuff. Mary Lynn and I went back there two years ago and went and walked through all the venues and everything, and everything is still actively used, the housing, everything. I mean, it's just like, you hear these horror stories about cities that build these Olympic complexes that then go into total disuse. All of that stuff is still being reused. It was planned that way from the very beginning. So you see, the smaller the community, the better the Olympics. So...
All right.
So, I'm putting that on your list.
All right.
I bet there was one word that they didn't say, and that was can't.
I think you're right.
Because you can never say the word can't, because somebody can't.
So, be ambitious. All right. Couple of things before we get started. In terms of council goals, uh, for the year, two years, let me just, a couple of thoughts of why we do this work. I have three points that I make on this, and that is, we are here because the citizens of the community entrusted us to make needed and prudent decisions on policy programs and projects to serve them. That's why we're here. And then you go on, it says, we're setting strategic direction for city government to accomplish the most important things needed by the community within the resources available. And to do these things, we will identify issues, problems, and opportunities, prioritize them, determine what could be done to address them within available resources, or if additional resources are needed. So, I mean, you, you heard that a lot, I think you all understand it, that, that your work is resource constrained. So we can't have a Christmas list, you know, it's got to be stuff that can happen within available resources and/or that there's the opportunity to get more. You know, we, we heard that, especially, you know, parks and senior center and stuff, there might be outside grant opportunities for a lot of that. To visualize what that means, uh, forget my lousy artwork here, but, so, so what is this? Any, any guesses?
Iceberg.
Iceberg!
I would say a broken tooth.
Yeah, and actually, Moller often suggested, and once, I made the top a little more peaky, and the council agreed it was Bart Simpson. So, uh, but no, iceberg, is it. And, and we need to look at what's available, I mean, to your role in your job, compared to the staff, you have a different role, and it all plays out here in that 70%, and this, of course, these are just ballpark, 70% of everything that makes a city run is done by staff, and you have no direct engagement in it other than setting broad expectations and adopting budgets. But the staff is just doing what they do, day to day. Checking out library books, issuing tickets, whatever it is. 20% up here, where it is visible to everyone, because this is the invisible stuff that happens, 20%, that's your role. And that is setting policy and direction. It is being the face that the public sees, maybe more than any other, especially with broadcasted council meetings. But 20%, we run into problems, okay, wait a minute, no, there's 10% missing here, and that's, that's where you work together. And that's, the budget process is the biggest example of what goes in that 10% in terms of working together to accomplish things with that. But there are other things that, that come into play on that, where there's a, you know, a hard work developing policy which has to be adopted by you, but staff's doing a huge amount of work to bring it to you and to inform you on your choices and your implications. That's the 10%. I, I don't perceive at all it's a problem here, but what happens, of course, in a lot of communities is you, you find this micromanagement thing happening, where the council's knocking on the door and telling, you know, assigning a public works crew to go out and fix a pothole, or second guessing the manager and all that stuff. Of course, your relationship here is you tell Jackie what you want, it's her responsibility to deliver it to you, and she has a staff backing her up to do that. There is a separation organizationally in how this works. You hold her accountable and responsible. So one reason for establishing council goals is also because, well, it creates clarity of what you want, and it, it's clarity for her, but also it's what you hold her accountable for. It's also clarity on her behalf that she knows what you want. And, and she's not second guessing, or running around, or whatever, or getting multiple things thrown at her, but there's clear clarity. And, you know, I, I think in the most healthy city governments, that's very clear, and it, it's the way that you evaluate your manager, because you can go through that list. It's the way that, also, that whole list is a, in a sense, a covenant between yourselves and the staff, saying, this is what we want you to do. And we're going to stick with that, and we're going to back you, and we're going to do our role in doing these kind of things, and then staff's covenant to you. But it's also really visible to the public. Remember, I said last night something about the city that has its act together? Well, this is a big part of having your act together, so that you can say, this is what's going on, we know the staff's doing this, these are the important, the big nugget things we're doing, you can, you know, visit this place to find out what's going on and, and to learn about the progress on this stuff. The iceberg becomes a, a really important analogy for understanding this, because that also gets into this resource thing, and we talked about that. This is the operational stuff, this is what to do, and in here, you've got to decide, what more can we do? And how do we prioritize that within whatever spare time there is? Because your resources aren't just money, they're the, the realistic expectations of staff. It's a reason why I asked Jim about who manages and inspects and project manages and all, all that stuff he's working on. I mean, he's, he's crazy. It's not like he's got an extra day a week to go work on something else. And, and so you need to be mindful of that. And then again, I said this before, you, you need to be mindful of yourselves and how much work you want to be as a city council, how much time you want to put in. You know, do we really have to take that on? What's the priority for putting things on our agenda? The part of the council goals is essentially you saying, these are the big ones, this is what we want to work on, and this is the stuff we want on our agenda in the ensuing two years to work on. You're, you're giving direction on what to serve back to you, because you want to work on this stuff and make decisions and move the community forward with it. Okay, does that make some sense? Yes.
One little thought, you're talking to Jackie, it's like the bridge between the decisions and getting stuff done.
Right.
Is that bridge over, have, have too much traffic about it? Are we going to Jackie too much, or are we interrupting her time too much for her good job done?
Well, this, you know, this council, two years ago, made a, an amazing decision, some of you will remember it, when we were going through goal setting, to recognize that she had four interim department heads and had to fill those, and she had three brand-new buildings to build in, in, in the following two years. And you, you said, there is no capacity to take on anything new. And that was very wise and prudent. Had you not had that conversation with each other, I don't think that would have happened. You know, she would have just had more stuff laid on her. But you, you cleared the path and, and agreed, those are the most important things, make them happen. And she did. Now, part of your assessment is, is there any room to work with in, in, in your team, in, in Jackie and her staff?
Well, this, are we, my, my, are we making the best decisions of the use of Jackie's time if we call her a question? That's kind of my, my question to Jackie is, is, is you being the bridge, is it getting in the way of you doing some of the stuff you're supposed to be doing?
I think no, because that's part of my responsibility, is to have those relationships with you. I think what works good here is that I've tried to set up monthly meetings with all of you. And most of you have learned to, to write things down, and then when you meet with me, we go through it. But I've got three new elected officials that I want to be successful, and so I have spent more time with them, but that will organically slow down the more council meetings that they go through. So I think there's a way that you can efficiently use my time, you know, be respectful that I, I work 12-hour days at night, I really don't want texts and phone calls, I don't check my email, holidays, weekends, that's my time. But I think I need to have those relationships with them, I think there's just more efficient way of doing it.
Cool. Her self-awareness is really important to you. About, that's really good. Shows she's a very seasoned manager. Definitely, definitely. I want to give you two other frameworks to think about as we start talking about projects and ideas, whatever. And that's a, a model for prioritization, which is this. It's must, need, and want. All these ideas, either they come from department heads, or from you, or what you've heard from citizens, or whatever, to give you some framework of thinking, let's drop, you know, take all those ideas and drop it into the, a framework like this. Must are those things you have to do. They're either imposed by an outside agency, law, organization, whatever it is. You know, rebuilding the corner pedestrian ramps because ADA change, I mean, there's, there's a must for that. Must also relates to those things which are in imminent danger to life and property, like a failing sewer system, or, or something like that. But those are the musts, so just no question, those things have to have priority, because they're kind of imposed on you, and you need to respond to them. Need doesn't rise to that level, but still, those are the things like deferred maintenance to talk about, the, you know, we're talking about the, the street repaving and, and work and stuff like that. Need, you're talking, I, I know there'll be discussion about the tourism strategy and how that fits in with the waterfront, park areas, and, and downtown. You can look at that saying, well, that's a need perhaps, because it achieves a really important transformational goal for the city. And there's a need to do that, because if we don't do it, then there's going to be more vacant storefronts and lost opportunity and all kinds of stuff. So, you know, that concept of need is one that is really forward-looking, saying, we need to do that, otherwise there will be some serious implications, and we'll miss some opportunities, or be in a worse position, to think about that. Want is the sizzle on the steak. It's the projects that don't rise up there, and yet they're cool. And they, they very well may have value simply because they make a bunch of people happy. I throw out the example of, like, flower baskets. Flower baskets are great. Yeah, you don't need them, it's not a must, but it's a want, because it kind of achieves more of a happy feeling, or whatever it might be. But be mindful of those three categories as we look at all of these things, and, and think about the practical implications. The other, um, yeah, I've got these all written down so that I can spell them right. Because I'm a lousy speller. This is interesting, to think about projects this way. Are they desirable? And it's only really when all three of those are in place that it makes sense to pursue something. And what, what those mean, desirable means that there is a, a, a community good that's being served of some kind, a, one that the public's really going to like, one that's necessary because of some compelling outside reason, falls in the must category, but there's some desirability to it. It's, it's something you can readily bring benefit to the community one way or the other. You can sell it well, kind of thing. You can defend it, because it's a very desirable thing. Feasible means that you have the resources to pursue it. I mean, if, let's talk Olympics. You say, hey, we want to, you know, we want to be the host city for the 20, 30 Games, yeah, it's probably not feasible, because the costs are just, you know, out there, and you don't necessarily have the relationships with other organizations or anything to make it happen. So it's saying, boy, do we have in place what we need to make this happen? Money, staff, relationships, partners, whatever it might be. Is it really feasible? And then viable is an interesting one, because it's really looking at what you're working on and saying, boy, will this really work? Is this the right project that actually might pursue that problem or opportunity? Is, does it have a reasonable chance of success at getting where we want to go? So that's desirable, is it feasible, is it viable? And I'll tell you where I found that. It was probably about four years ago, in Fast Company Magazine, which is an amazing magazine. And it, it is the model that Nintendo uses for evaluating ideas for new products. And I'm looking at that going, wow, you know, we could really apply that to a lot of our work in city halls, too, to just think that. So I just want to offer those to you as models to think about, to give, give some structure to your discussion, perhaps. Any response to those things? Any other ideas, any other models, any wisdom for each other on any of this? Okay. The, jump back here. I went through, and these were the items identified by your staff, highly abbreviated there, but you'll find all of that in that, that draft city of council goal-setting document that your staff prepared for you. And those were the ones that were tagged as needing council involvement to pursue. So that park fee station, I mean, it goes right down, hopefully you can read my writing. There's, there's a lot of things on there. The other evaluation is, what of these are underway, they're going to happen... They're going to happen anyway. All we've got to do is review and approve. In other words, it doesn't jump up to something you have to work on to make it happen because your staff is handling it and you're involved in it. You can just expect to happen, but it's not going to be all that significant. As opposed to other things that are these major policy discussions where you know you're probably going to spend a lot of time and you're going to have a lot of citizen interest in those things. So what is it that rises to the level of a council goal? Because some of these things, you know, are going to happen. You don't have to go on your list. This is your list. What is it that you as a council want to do? So I put that up there to start that discussion. Some of those things are bigger items than others, but at least it helps. You know what your staff is looking at and expecting to come down the road. And to you, you need to now decide what it is you as a council want to be doing. I will just stop you if you come up with more than eight because that's ridiculous. No city can do that. I was working with Madras a couple of years ago, and they had a prior list that had 36 items on it. And of course, the obvious question was, well, how many of those did you achieve? None. It was all scattershot. There was no way they could focus on anything. And so we got it down to five, and by golly, they pulled it off. They really did. All right, with that, let's just keep this as an open conversation and just start talking about your reaction to what the staff said, what your ideas are, what you want to lay on the table, things that I heard from you that were fairly common was the park master plan and development, was downtown Main Street redevelopment-type project, some of the diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives, perhaps, a community-wide strategic plan that might just gather opinions from the whole community and set some broad community direction on things. These are, you know, and there might have been others. I might, I check my notes and see if I missed anything. But let's just open this up and just start talking about it. Greg?
There's a huge one that I hear about every day. Day doesn't go by I don't hear about it. We do not welcome the people I hear from. I don't know who does or doesn't, but the I-205 tolling is going to affect us. And we're going to get better at that.
Yeah, I haven't heard a word about that since the last meeting.
Oh, I hear about it. That's what my neighbor said.
I have about a key email. They're supposed to be doing a study and they're supposed to send us the results for me.
So what would be the council's involvement in that, that's policymaking?
Nothing.
You know, I actually might work with West Lynn.
Yeah, there's nothing that we can do, other than...
We have no say?
There's nothing. It's a state.
Yeah, it's legislative on the state level.
We can't say nothing now, but when they're writing down Arlington and blocking up everything, then you'll hear it from everybody.
Well, there'll be a point where they open it up for community engagement, but they're not there yet. So it's probably, unless I heard like a year, year and a half.
Yeah, and that's when probably the council will want to make a statement on it.
Yeah.
I think that.
But we're not, we're not there yet.
Okay, cool. But it's good to be able, now you know more.
Yeah, exactly. We've got to get the community involved to have a say.
Yeah, and that's, the ODOT group is the one that's in charge of all the community engagement pieces of that, so.
And I don't think there's anybody, at least on the last council, that was for it, right?
Oh, gosh, no. I haven't heard one person except ODOT.
What else? Oh, wait a minute.
The Trolley Trail Bridge really kind of, I don't know if Jackie feels this way, needs to be coupled with the Portland Avenue redevelopment because the $20 million grant was for both. As one full meal deal.
The grant that you're referring to that didn't pass?
Right, but I'm meeting with Lynn Peterson the first week of February because they're looking at other options to fund these projects.
Correct.
And that's the downtown project?
Yeah, so, I mean...
And I'm going to put all your ideas up here, then we're going to whittle it. So I'm asking them to go back to my line.
Portland Avenue redevelopment is something that I hear the most about, and I don't know about you folks as well. But, yeah, people are pretty pissed off that, excuse me, that absolutely nothing's being done on that. So, not that...
The intent, though, weren't we out courting developers?
What you heard from John Southgate this morning, that's the next step. We've got to fix our code this year.
Yep.
So then we can start, and we want to do that before we break ground on the new library. So if we've got new street standards, we can do that. The timing would have been optimum if Metro had passed that bond because then we would have infrastructure funding for Portland Avenue. So the next piece is to fix our code and get that taken care of, yes. We also have a million-dollar grant from the feds to do phase two of the Trolley Trail Bridge. COVID stopped that. We're waiting for them to bring that to us. And we have $147,000 match for that. We're just waiting for the next phase. So the Trolley Trail Bridge is moving forward. The piece that's missing now is the construction of the bridge.
Right, because that was a feasibility study, wasn't it? The grant monies?
Yes.
Yeah, the second feasibility study.
Now we're into environmental and design. That's the second phase.
Let me ask a question. Code. You listed a number of code items in your report.
Yes.
Didn't hear from her, but you can read it. And it included those, right?
No.
Okay, that's what I want to know because I don't, there were several places where code update comes in.
Those are going to happen anyway. The ones that we're referencing is the second bullet point in this top five areas of recommendation. That is where this robust community engagement into changing possibly to multifamily zoning in downtown Portland Avenue and in doing the housing needs analysis. All of that is going to happen this next year. So then if a developer wants to develop, we've made all the changes to our code.
Yeah, because John, I mean, I think I remember because John had, oh, her name escapes me, the woman that built North End and Canton, a couple of developments in Canton come, and she didn't see that downtown configuration, you know. So I think it's kind of like, we have some work to do on that to impress a developer, at least give the impression that there is a downtown core, that we accept that as a community.
Yes.
And then get them interested in it, and I think you're right, the code needs to change. But initially, he reached out to folks and they felt it wasn't quite there. It wasn't like within their development portfolio. So I guess the question is, how do we change that so that we can convince them that is a downtown core?
Well, fix the code is the first thing that they said.
The whole downtown revitalization plan was based on that, that, I mean, if we were going to get here, then we needed to change that. And that's the thing that we get the pushback from the community, it's the parking.
Parking, yes.
The height of the buildings.
Even though the buildings were already at code up to four, and we brought it to three. So I think it's messaging a lot of our...
Messaging to a couple of people.
We're not doing the planning work here. We're setting the stage to do the planning work. And the reality is, staff, planning commission, and council will all be pretty darn deeply engaged in the work of the code update and the downtown plan, which this is the next step. Are there other, what else would happen in the two years coming up?
The library construction's going to start, so that's why we've got to get the code updates. And I think this is what we're all excited about because that's going to start the transition in downtown Portland. Trolley Trail Bridge is a piece of that, so, yes, that's a huge focus of where their time is going to be spent the next...
As well as staff. So to take, you know, obviously something to take into consideration that that's going to suck up a lot of resources, excuse me, that's going to require the investment of a lot of resources to achieve it.
Yep.
Okay, that's up there. Yes.
I want to get this revisited. Our charter review worked for an entire year, and the reason it didn't pass was one little thing. Our charter, with the exception of one line, is not gender neutral. Where there's one line in here and you have to kind of look for it. It says, this charter refers to whatever as any, it's just not as neutral as I'd like it to be. What we came up with was, the hiccup on this charter, if anybody remembers, was the difference between a manager and an administrator. I think it's worth visiting, and one of the reasons I will give you that it could be done fairly easily is that our advisor was Chad. If we lose Chad, then we're back at square one and we lose a lot of work and a lot of time and money invested. But I think really, without as much work as we did the first time, this could be revisited, this could be passed, and our charter could be cleaned up and clarified.
It has to go out for a vote.
I know, I know that.
No, I'm just saying for everybody that we can't just change it. It has to go out for a vote.
Right.
Of the people.
But there's a lot of people still around that worked on this that are really willing to go at it again, to clean it up and make it be what it, what we believe is the citizens want it to be. And it can be done fairly easily, and I think it needs to be done.
How old is that? When was that last?
Like 90, no, probably 86.
Yeah.
Oh.
Gladstone.
Our parks...
You were born?
I mean, there's, I can't, I don't know what date it was signed. It doesn't really say on here.
They usually say like the very first section will say.
Okay.
While she's looking, our...
To change it to gender neutral, does that require a vote of the people? Even something as simple as that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless the charter itself gives you authority to make those fixes, you can't change any word in it.
And ours?
1984.
Eighty-four.
The city of Kaiser Charter was 1982 when the city was incorporated. And it was full of non-gender neutral language, and there were homophobic provisions in there. And so charter review went through, cleaned all of that stuff up. And there was some real wonder whether the community, which is very conservative, would accept all that. But it passed 86% of Portland. So that was a wonderful affirmation of the capability to transform those things. So anyway, it's on your list?
Something I would like to see move forward because I believe that it's fiscally responsible to do it at this time before we lose the people who are in the know.
Okay, other ideas for the list. And once we get the list up there, then we're going to walk back through and just start whittling on them and advocating for them or against them or whatever.
Annexation. I mean, we've already started that conversation, and because of Metro's feasibility study, it's really the right time to do it.
That's the Oak Lodge project?
Yeah.
But to be clear, Metro is only looking at annexing into the urban growth management area of Gladstone and not the city of Gladstone.
Right.
Well, let's do a quick clarification on what that means so that everybody understands that. Could you just, just a couple of seconds on that?
Metro was hired by Oak Lodge Group, Jennings Lodge, to look at some options of whether or not they want to incorporate and be their own municipality, whether or not they want to incorporate in, annex into Milwaukee, or expand into some of the Jennings Lodge area, which is the urban growth management area that Clackamas County and Gladstone have, which is different than them annexing into city of Gladstone boundary jurisdiction. That is the study that's going on right now.
So there's, but there's two, Mayor, you're also, you've spoken on Jennifer Street and the Clackamas industrial.
But the conversation's starting with the county, and I think we need to show them that annexation is something that we're interested. We need to be at the table.
Okay.
Full disclosure, I'm part of that consulting team.
Awesome.
Jackie knows that.
Awesome.
All right. And this study is really looking at the financial impacts.
Yep.
What do, about four different scenarios, what are they going to cost anybody or everybody in it? And then my role is to just deal with the feasibility from a sociology perspective, basically, kind of thing, which will not be a thrust of the work, but it's going to be interesting to see where that goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Other ideas?
I have one more. I, in a long-term goal, not too long, I'm within a few years, I would like to see Gladstone have a Parks and Recreation Department that incorporates the senior center. And the reason that I say that is because the word recreation to me incorporates the senior center, incorporates the Parks Department, and the downtown corridor that wants to grow. When they did the study for our tourism, school and parks, that's why people come here. So if we're not readily willing to invest in our parks, I don't think that, that's just not going to happen. And I think right now is a really good time to think about that because with Jim being a consultant, obviously, he's going to be transitioning out in the next year-plus, whatever works for him and Jackie. I completely agree with that. I think with him losing people due to retirement, in full disclosure, it would be a good time to revisit how his three FTEs are working, how the senior center's three FTEs are working, and how the recreation department, who gets part-time help in there. Where can we best utilize a person's complete focus towards growing that large-picture recreation department? How that all works, I don't have it all down on paper. I wish I did. I just think that Jim is wearing a lot of hats, and I commend him for every one of those. But does that include a clear vision on what's happening with the parks? I don't think so, but I think that if we had a person, rather than piecemealing those FTEs, that had a clear vision, that had a clear job, and that's their sole purpose every day, I think that we could incorporate that way better. And I will give you one example. The pickleball courts. On Tuesday night, they have ladies' nights. Ladies' night, there's 50 people easily down there. Some of them are just down there to talk to people with braces on their knees, and they can't, you know, that kind of thing. I would say 50% of those people made groups. After they were done, where are you going? Well, we're going to go down here and have a hamburger. We're going to go up to High Rocks and have a beer. Anybody want to join us? And those groups went to those places. So to invest in that recreation between the senior center and the parks and make it a whole, that to me is the vision that Gladstone people would like to see.
So you say, take it out of the public works realm and put it into a senior Parks and Rec Department?
Yeah, but we're going to take away that senior word, remember?
Right, well, you know what I'm, but combine, okay.
But yes, I would like to, and I think, like I said, with hiring people, new people coming in and things like that, I just think this is a perfect opportunity to restreamline that necessity. So that's my idea in a very long story.
Parks departments are schizophrenic because they have folks that are mowing the grass and folks that are programming the kitty programs.
Right.
And those programmatic pieces are, I mean, when you combine them, it can be tough and cities outgrowing. Only in Eugene with the Parks Department, oh, Parks is part of Public Works for the Purpose of Maintenance, and they have a separate Department of Culture and Leisure.
Oh.
And that's senior center, I mean, all kinds of stuff, all that programmatic stuff.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but only in Eugene would they come up with a name like that, right? Okay, other ideas? Things for the list.
Affordable housing is not up there, and I think we're going to have to do quite a bit in that realm. Policy changes, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. Is that a subsection?
Is that a, is it?
Of the Portland Avenue redevelopment, or you're, well, I guess not.
No, no. I don't know how much more we have to do on it, but I'm sure there's going to be some things.
So is that like the Development Code update sort of in?
Probably in more community outreach and, yeah.
Yeah, it'll probably draw a lot of community attention, which means you can expect a lot of people wanting to come and testify.
Probably. I would imagine so.
It'd probably take several council meetings.
Yep.
Other ideas? Anything else?
If everybody emphasis on the infrastructure since we just raised everybody's bill rates.
If everybody emphasis on the infrastructure since we just raised everybody's bill rates.
Yeah, you, you talked to me about doing a community-wide strategic plan of some kind.
Well, you said diversity, equity, inclusion already, so I figured it was up there already.
Oh, well, but a strategic plan is much bigger than that. Um, so, whatever.
I'm trying to rack my brain about what you're referring to.
Okay, well, you know, kinda what I got out of it is, is you'll see communities that will do a broad community strategic plan.
Like our town halls that we used to have.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, and, you know, those are big, big projects because it's not just council goal-setting for two fiscal years, it's, who do we wanna be, what do we wanna be when we grow up, basically, you know? What's Gladstone fifty years from now, and how are we gonna get there, kind of thing? And it involves not just city government, but the city may be the convenor and facilitator, but you're bringing in the school district and everybody else, and, and it's all great stuff. And there are a lot of great examples around the state of the results of that work, but it is expensive and it is really time-consuming. But still, might be something viable to do. You were talking about the perception of people about Gladstone and needing to change it or something? Maybe there's a way to think about it. Well, I'm just gonna write it down, it doesn't have to be your, um, suggestion. Well, uh, it's just on the list because I put in everything. Anything else? Okay, so we have all of those things up there that came from the department heads. And I think the thing to do might be to start on those and decide which of those things, if any, rise to the level of a council goal. They might be, well, I mean, it sounds like it's what they're gonna do anyway.
Yeah.
But which of these rise to the level of a council goal?
We can cross out the B-stations and bury order that, didn't they?
Yeah, that's being done.
Two right now, the site plan for the park.
That's down at Melstrom Bar.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's already in the master plan.
Yeah, so it seems like that's not there, shelter fees.
Staff is working on that to figure that out.
Pickleball courts.
We have to have a discussion about that.
Yeah.
The council have a discussion about it, does it raise to the level of a council goal, would you suggest? Meaning it's gonna be something that's gonna be one of the five or six most important things to work on.
Nope.
Well, no, if you say that's.
It's not a goal, it's something that we're gonna be discussing just in the matter of Parks and Rec work plan, blah, blah, blah. But it's not something that we're gonna put up as a high, thirty-thousand-foot goal.
Gotcha.
Okay, concurrence? All right, here we go, support user fees?
Nope, staff's working on that.
Okay, Senior Center expansion assessment? And remember, Colin was talking about not only physical, but I mean, talking service expansion.
Right.
I don't know if that would rise to the level you'd call it a goal or not, but.
Well, I'd tie that in with my thought of creating that new bubble environment of.
Is that something he's gonna formalize in the next two years, you think, Jackie?
What's that?
The Senior Center expansion assessment?
I think right now we need you guys to figure out what you want to do, and then we tell you how we're gonna do it, that's what John's trying to whittle it down to.
But what I'm thinking is if this is something that he really isn't gonna be serious about until next year, it really doesn't need to be on our goal for twenty-one, twenty-three, it may be the one following.
It's hard to tell with COVID what kind of service level we will get back to at a senior center.
Yeah.
Which is his number one priority.
Which I think that it depends. If, if you're wanting us to take another comprehensive look at, at the Senior Center and Parks and all of that, then we will have to start that sooner rather than wait for a couple of years to do that.
Can we assume?
I'm saying wait a couple of years.
This is a freestanding idea, but it really does, you know, fit into that, uh, Parks and Rec Department discussion.
Yeah.
So maybe the real question is, do you wanna have that kind of assessment, uh, on the list?
I'd say let's wait to see what else rises to the top, and if we think we have some room left.
Okay, I'll leave it.
Because that's, that's gonna be a really big discussion.
Okay, Fire Department planning and staffing, which is where they wanna implement their strategic plan and get to three, uh, three firefighters on every engine.
The staff is working on that, and then they'll do a presentation, so I don't think it needs to be a goal for us.
Jackie, you agree, basically? Or is there some big policy decision that all that?
It could be a policy discussion regarding what the standard of covered is going to be, and it can certainly be a budget discussion as well to continue the current service levels that we're providing, which is why we listed it as one of the top areas of focus for the next two years.
Okay, without debate at this moment, I'm gonna mark that to say the reason to keep that on the table. Now, Chief also talked about revising the municipal code to incorporate the structure of the Fire Department.
That's gonna happen anyway.
Right, okay, uh, police accreditation, what does council have to do other than clap?
We don't have anything to do with that.
All right, that's kinda what I thought. Trolley Trail Bridge.
That will be discussing.
Come out, so it's, it's still on there. Uh, negotiations, and this is with the police and fire unions. Jackie, tell us about that in terms of?
Those are gonna happen anyway.
Whoops. It's gonna happen anyway, it's gonna take a chunk of council time, right, to ratify or?
Well, I think the point too is it's gonna take a lot of staff time.
Yeah.
So even though it's not a council goal, this is where we're gonna be spending our time on these other things that maybe we're not gonna be able to do the council goal thing.
Yeah, that, that's a big chunk out of the iceberg, wherever the iceberg ended up, over there. It really is, might actually push your seventy percent up some even, because it does take a lot of time. Is there gonna be a, a negotiation review committee that will involve councilors or anything?
Uh, we, the council will have to approve the IGA, but it's all staff-driven and legal-revised.
Any reason to put that up as a potential council goal? Okay, just something to be mindful of, so I'll take that off there. Uh, the code updates, which were the municipal codes having to do with the, uh, housing plan,
Mm-hmm.
which is also reflected up here, affordable housing. Can we just kind of assume that that fits back in the affordable housing strategy?
Yeah, well, I think it's all of them.
I thought that was municipal code.
Oh, well, there you go, which are the things that?
We have a lot of cleanup in our code to do, those are going to happen the next two years.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that'll take some council time, but it's gonna take a lot of staff time to draft.
Yeah, it just comes to us and we approve it or not, and there's not a whole lot of work that we have to put into it.
I did, for Almsville, I was tasked with reading the code from start to finish and figure out where it fits in.
Yeah.
It was huge job, it'll take a long time to get it, yeah.
It's this thick, it's awful.
Yeah, and it's arcane and.
And that's just land use.
Yeah, we decided to
Zoning.
lead in the section on tying up horses downtown, you know, because it was cool. Okay, but that's gonna be a lot of staff.
There's gonna be a lot of staff time, and it's gonna be sort of in all of those little pieces up there, so.
Uh huh, and it will come to you, and you're gonna wanna walk through and be very deliberative about talking about those proposings.
And I think it's in the must section, it's not in a won't section, I mean, it's sort of to the, yeah.
Jackie said a must or a need?
Oh, that's what I meant.
It's beyond must, I mean, it's, we've, we've gotta fix our code.
So like circle it and leaving stars all over.
And then the last one, and Jackie, this was yours, local access board, what was that for?
Yeah, so when you guys, um, uh, the Gladstone Library Board was dissolved, and there is a recommendation from that group before they dissolved that we create a local access board, which is a group of community members that provide input to Clackamas County Library on the Gladstone Library. So that would be creating another advisory board, that would be, uh, monthly meetings, that would mean me and fine society to staff those meetings, um, recruiting for seven members to participate on a monthly basis. So that's what the local access board is, it's replacing the Gladstone Library Board that we had previously.
Does it have to be a monthly meeting? Can it be quarterly, like Senior Center Advisory Board, or every other month, or?
I think that that could be up to the city council to decide. It would also probably need a, a city council liaison. Um, but we would have to establish that by ordinance and bring it to the city council, um, so.
Does it need to be seven, could it be five?
We like seven.
Seven is what.
We have problems sometimes getting people on the boards, I mean, if you have.
I don't think library is gonna have an issue.
Well, the, the, the meat and potatoes of it could come to you at a later time, but creating another advisory board has staff time involved with it. So does creating a charter review committee, if that's where we're headed, so I'm just trying to be cognizant. In your Portland Avenue redevelopment, housing needs analysis, the recommendation is to create a housing ad hoc committee as well. So again, that's a lot.
Is it a council goal? It's gonna happen anyway.
No.
No, it's not, it's a decision to do it.
It's a decision that the council needs to decide if they want to create another advisory board for the city of Gladstone.
Yeah, I, I don't even know what that role would be, what would that role be? I mean, is it gonna be the county?
For the library?
It would be the city council appointing seven citizens from Gladstone that maybe represent various organizations that would meet and provide input
Not there.
to the library director on the Gladstone Library.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because right now we don't have that.
Right, but we'll have two on the county one, right?
Well, one that lives in Gladstone and one that's outside of Gladstone.
So would this be an ad hoc committee, is that what this would be?
No, it would be a, a permanent one.
It would be a permanent.
Yeah.
What's, where's the power in the committee, I guess is my question.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, where, what, they would just give it advice.
It's an advisory, just like all of our other groups, it's advisory.
This is what we think, and the county says thanks, we've got all that time.
That's what I was.
But this is what we wanna do.
Well, that's, you know, that's like parks and traffic, they come up with plans, they give them to us, and we can say yes or no, and there's the door, so it's the same concept.
There are a lot of people in this town very interested in what happens with our, with and in our library.
Yes.
I will say that.
Yes, and it was a fight getting the county to agree to even this. They wanted to just have the one representative.
Well, I mean, I understand that, I agree with you, but the question again, though, is if we are at the behest of the county, where's the power in the group? And sometimes if you don't have power in the group, that becomes even more frustrating, and it creates more turmoil within the community. So if we don't have power, I mean, what's the county's position on this?
So the.
It's advisory.
The conduit between the city of Gladstone and Clackamas County would be, what they're recommending is that the city of Gladstone representative that is on this new Clackamas County Library Board, that person would be on this local access board, and that would be the person telling the director at Gladstone Oak Lodge, that's the conduit there.
Okay, so it's a communication conduit primarily?
Yes, for that.
And instead of just that one person going, oh, I've decided that I wanna paint it purple, they actually have a group that's advising them on what they wanna carry forward.
Would say with that.
Yeah.
All right, so is it? Council goal?
It's a big deal, this community is.
All right, so it's, it's on the potential goal list. Chad whacked me upside the head, I'm glad he did, because there were two items on the staff's list that I didn't get up there. Started at the very top was COVID recovery. Doing that, which is necessary to help the community and help city government rebound from the pandemic.
Yeah, I mean, we are still an extreme risk category that makes it very difficult to maneuver through.
Right, right.
Trying to.
That's probably gonna be a two-year, two years to come out of.
Yeah, and they tell us exactly what we can do and what we can't do.
Right. That's, I don't know if that rises to the level of a council goal, because it has to happen anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, but it also is a huge resource drain in a lot of ways, but up to you. You wanna put it on the list of something, uh, these are the things that'll get, you know, corresponded with the community to see what your goals are and how you're gonna accomplish them. So is that something to put on the list?
It's important, it's impacted everybody.
I think it's the most first in most people's minds.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm just gonna mark it for now. And then the last thing that was on the list was, uh, the Public Works Facility.
That's important, that's.
I'd like, I'd like that idea to get that one down.
Yeah, that's super important.
And that will be, um, a lot of council discussion and agreement on how to proceed and policy and.
Well, and didn't Jim say that the first step is just getting it on the ballot in November, and so that's.
And that's your big decision.
That's a year.
Yeah.
I mean, by the time that happens, and then everybody votes, and as we all know how long elections take.
And then we'll do another progressive design build and get that sucker done.
Done, under budget or on budget and on time.
There you go.
That is actually good stuff, that's the stuff that staff will guide you through getting that done, like we did with this process here. But if it doesn't rise to the level of a council goal again, then we gotta figure out what to do long-term with that.
No, we, they're, they're in desperate need, I, everyone needs to go get, take a tour of it.
You know, it got brought up two years ago.
Jackie, what you just said, though, is you're talking about us elevating it to the council goal.
Well, it has been on the council goals, and that's why we've done all this work for the last two years. It, it needs to remain a focus so that when we talk to the community, this is a council priority to address our critical facilities. It's a continuation of what we've already started.
All you have to do is say what Jim said, this is our public works and it floods. That should get everybody on the ball, right? There you go. Let's take a look at the lists that you, uh, suggested up here and kinda walk it through, just like we just did. The Trolley Trail Bridge project, how does that fall into this in terms of a council goal? Is it happening anyway, what?
It's.
How do you see it?
I mean, it's moving forward in the phase that it's in currently, it got put on hold because of COVID, but as far as big, huge decisions on building the thing, that's not gonna be in the next two years.
Concur?
Do we have a two-year list and a five-year list, four?
We're just looking at two years, okay.
This, this really is a focus, but you can agree to start something that will go obviously longer. Making that decision to start is an important policy decision, uh, so that could fall in like that. But that's not the case with this one, because it's already started.
Yeah, we're midstream on the.
Sure, and your expectation is it's gonna go, and the council doesn't need to
Yeah.
make any major decisions until it gets to the end.
No, we've done the community engagement piece of it, we're just waiting for the final, um, report.
So concurrence, if that doesn't need to be on the list?
Can I ask a question, just, and I think it may be helpful for especially some of the new, some of the new councilors? Is, is the goal saying this is something that staff's not working on anyways that we would like to prioritize? Or is this also talking about, we recognize that this is, this particular issue's gonna take an inordinate or a lot of staff time, so therefore we're gonna make this a council goal just to recognize that staff is gonna be spending so much time on this?
No, I think what you do is acknowledge it's taking a whole lot of staff time, and therefore they don't have time to take on something new.
So if it's not something that's, if, even though, if it's something that's happening anyways and it's gonna take a lot of staff time, it's not a council goal, but it should be considered when you're coming up with these other council goals.
Right.
Okay.
So municipal code, it's gonna take a huge amount of staff time, but it's still full of policy decision and discussion by the council. So, you know, it, it probably rises, but you're right, that's, these are just things to be mindful of when we talk about that seventy percent of the iceberg.
Well, I just think it's important for everyone to understand, you know, with Jackie and her, you know, you talked about the, the bridge being full.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, the bridge is already eighty percent or ninety percent full for Jackie, then you're, you can only add ten percent more. And so be very mindful of that, when you say, oh, this is happening anyways, this is happening anyways, it doesn't mean that you automatically need to come up with five goals, because if the bridge is ninety percent full, maybe you only come with two goals.
And we need to finish what we've started and not get scattered like madras. And we, and that's what we need to be mindful of.
Could we put little stars by the things that are in progress right now?
Sure, sure.
That we, we know we're working on, like the Trolley Trail Bridge, the housing needs analysis?
Yeah.
Yeah, affordable housing is part of the housing needs analysis, but those are things.
What work needs to be done on a charter review? You had, you met, you had the groups, right, it was, does it just have to be passed, does that have to be introduced?
One change.
One change.
One section.
From administrator to, or from a.
Or take that change out completely.
They wanted it, the, the vote was to make it a managerial, help me out here.
City manager versus city administrator, and then some of the, as I recall, some of the duties that currently exist. City manager versus city administrator, and then some of the, as I recall, some of the duties that currently exist, for example, department head hiring and finding approval needing to come to the council. I think that was being taken away and given fully to the city manager's authority, and I think there was some concern about that, if I recall correctly.
It's just a little bit of upkeep, but I think in bringing us forward in, I, I just, I think it's important, I mean, I have.
Well, my question.
So we did the whole charter review committee, the charter review committee proposed something, the council agreed with it, they put it on the ballot. There became controversy over this change from a city administrator to a city manager, so the voters voted it down and the charter didn't pass. So I think what's being proposed.
It was one of those, what, no.
Yeah, I think what's being proposed is that you just look at that one section on city manager, revise that, and then move forward with what was already proposed by the charter.
Yeah, legally, we can do that in the vote, we could take that section out and take it to the ballot.
Well, you need to, you need to fix that section, you need to have something in there for it, but you just have to decide what that is.
So that's like a half an hour meeting, I mean, that should be really.
We're metering stuff out here.
Well, you also are making a decision that you do want it on your agenda.
It's important.
And it's gonna take a chunk, so, you know, it may be kind of small in scope, but maybe it's a goal that you want to, you know, see that it is done in the next 12 months.
It's more of a project, though, than a goal.
Yeah.
When you say affordable housing, these are all the things we're doing for affordable housing, these projects. And that's what you have to distinguish, like investing in infrastructure, all of these things that we're working on to do that. You know, so that's what you're deciding is the 30,000-foot view. And a lot of the ones that we had two years ago might just carry over, because we still need to invest in infrastructure, we're still addressing affordable housing, we're still providing resources for parks. I don't know if you still want to explore annexing options, that's one that, as I had no time the last two years to spend in, so I think that's, that's what Chad said, is just because some of these are already underway, doesn't mean you can add more, because there's still going to be a lot of time to getting those done.
Right, with like the 2009 goal was provide consistent, accurate, public messaging, lots of, websites been doing great, or social media. I mean, that's never gonna go away, but it still takes staff time to, you know, Haley's gotta pop on there and do whatever.
But that's kind of come down from a goal to just business as usual, almost.
It's gonna be now that it's set up.
Business as usual doesn't need to stay on the list.
Yeah, exactly.
If you were gonna stop doing it, it should probably be on your list as a deliberate action or policy decision you had to make. But those things that are ongoing, I, I, I wouldn't do it, I, you were talking about, I'll just flashback to Madras, just to lighten it up here. At 36, and we actually whittled it down to five, but then we whittled it to one. So this work was happening in December, or it should be January 2017, and the council ended up adopting one goal. Can you guess what it was? Madras, Oregon, 2017.
Oh, it was the.
It was survive the solar eclipse.
Oh, yes.
Because they recognized in this discussion that it was gonna take everybody and everything, because Madras was the epicenter of that whole event, CNN crews and BBC crews and all that stuff. And it was neat, because they really, really said, boy, that's what we've got, that's a must, we can't ignore it, and, and they rallied around it. Then they had four other goals, maybe after that was done, is what they worked on. But it's great to think about those things that, we're gonna take a whole lot of staff time and council time in terms of doing these things. Okay, so we're recognizing a lot of these things are happening anyway, and are gonna take time. The Portland Avenue redevelopment, which includes the development code update, and the Trolley Trail Bridge is, maybe it's not me, that's not in there. Where does that fall on this one, it's ongoing, but also you're gonna be working on it yourselves and have a fair amount of time into it. It's gonna take quite a bit of staff time, Jackie, what's your sense about it? I mean, is this something to, on council goals, because it's really a big nugget item that's coming up?
Which one are you talking about?
The Portland Road redevelopment and the development code update that goes with it and stuff like that.
I think this implementing the city's downtown revitalization plan is a council goal. Because there's a lot that's gonna be going on with that to make that happen, whether it is updating our code. The library's part of that plan, the Trolley Trail's part of that plan, and so if, if implementation of the city's downtown revitalization plan, that's a goal, and then here's these projects that we're gonna do to fulfill that goal.
So Jackie, right here, the top five recommended areas of focus. I mean, it's.
We tried to tell you.
It's just it's put in there succinctly, right, you know, number three, resources, and it says, you know, all of those things. I don't think that this is anything that we've disagreed with.
Right.
Just in this room.
I mean, that, I mean, that's what we did as staff, is we tried to show you where we think the areas of focus are, and those are the top five council goals.
You can manage.
But we, we don't want to be presumptuous. You, if there's something that you guys want to have done, then let's talk about taking one of these off of this list.
But you think you can do these five? With your bridge being 80%, 90% full? Or is this part of that 80 and 90% already, I mean, is?
I think my biggest concern on this is the third bullet, on getting all of those projects done in the parks. It's a lot, unless we rethink city government in general, like, you know, Councilor Garlington was mentioning, which, which staff has already started to think about, you know, what if the senior center never returns back to congregate meals? And we need to start thinking, how do we provide services, and maybe it is that we start having more recreational type activities or volunteer coordinator activities coming out of the senior center, and I think that's really what Colin wants to start assessing. So I, I think we can get to where all of you guys want to go, but my biggest concern is parks, because I know it has been so difficult for Jim or I to attend Parks Board's meeting every month and say, no, no, no. And it sounds like we're being against what they want to do, but the reality is, we don't have the revenue coming in yet from the implementation of the parking fee, and that's gonna take a year to get to that. So parks in general remains our, our concern with the resources and having a very aggressive list, but we will certainly try to get all of these done, if that's what you guys tell us to do.
Concern at the moment, I'm hearing, but not necessarily a major concern, once you've established and know that there's a revenue stream.
I think we're about a year and a half out from hitting the jackpot with parks and revenue and, and people and getting these things done. I really do.
That, you just answered.
Yes.
So I hear you on that, thank you.
She did raise a point I wish she would have said earlier, and I thank you, and that's, having this list means if something comes along that changes a priority, it should be on the list, then she's gonna ask you, okay, what do we take off? Just be mindful of that, it's gonna be that solid, in terms of what to do. So you're.
And I'm trying to hit what everybody was bringing up, diversity, equity, inclusion, I know that Clackamas County has hired an inclusion officer, and they're going through this multi-year process of trying to assess all of the cities in Clackamas County, and they have asked for elected officials to participate, I think that's something that you might be interested in. So I think we can achieve some of those goals through those partnerships without taking a lot of city staff time to do that. So I've, I've kind of reached out on that one. The Charter Review Committee, it will still take legal time and staff time, but I don't know, I haven't reviewed that to really know what's gonna go into changing it, for that to happen. I do think that Gladstone needs to do a comprehensive visioning 20-year plan, and maybe in two years, that's the right time to rethink that. It will cost probably $50,000, and you need to commit 12 months to that. I do think Gladstone needs to do it, I just don't think we can do it in the next two years for that.
Okay.
So was the council.
What's next?
Odd, were you, I mean, you were referring to the recommended areas of focus, were, were you thinking that it kind of, the course is set here?
Yeah, it was funny, because when John had asked me, like, what, what, what do you want to be a goal, that one goal, and it was like, I said, actually, I prefer to hear what Jackie and the staff believe the goal should be, because you're the ones actually doing the work.
So what you pay us to do.
Exactly, and so, you know, I was just like, I sort of feel like we should leave that, what can you do? I mean, everyone knows, I, I work with my husband, and he has no problem coming up and going, as I think I'm tidied up my last thing, and goes, can you send that contract out to somebody, as he walks out the door? No, I can't, my brain's full of whatever, so I don't know, we can just go, hey, Jackie, you know what, let's, you know, here's this, and then here's, you know, five more things, I just don't think that that's.
When, when John and I talked about planning for this, it goes, I, I serve at the pleasure of the city council. You guys tell me what you want done, and if I can't answer it today, I come back to you and say, okay, this is what it's gonna take to do that, or there's just no way, and we recommend X, Y, Z.
Also, it's not inappropriate to even rank these in terms of like high, medium, low. And if something medium, suddenly you find resources that you didn't have for something high, you can make the conscious choice to swap positions. And also, high, medium, low is where you're putting things on the to-do list for maybe the next round. But you're making a commitment to yourselves to be mindful of that when the time comes.
But I think all of the things are sort of.
Embedded in.
Already embedded in it, you know, I mean, it's.
Which actually makes us feel good as management, because we feel like we've captured your concerns and aspirations for Gladstone, so I think that is good.
So just to be clear, just because it's not on this list doesn't mean that we aren't gonna be talking about it. I mean, look at what we did in just the last year alone, and most of that wasn't on this goal, the list of goals, so.
Javier, I, I don't know if I have the stamina. I, I can't believe we did what we did, I, I committed my full life to Gladstone this past year. I gave it 150%, I don't know if I have the stamina to do a repeat of what we were able to accomplish this year.
No, but there's always little things that come up that are gonna drop in.
And there's stuff that's gonna drop off and move to the top, I mean, who knew we were gonna go into a pandemic?
Exactly.
Right.
When we were in a pandemic years ago.
Yep.
So let's hope that this is the height of craziness. And we don't have so new, but.
Knock on wood, there's gotta be wood somewhere.
Isn't that where the environment situation dictate the priorities?
Yeah, I mean, in a way, you start out with a plan, and then you have to be flexible to move out of that, so.
What I'm kind of hearing, let me just throw this out, just, is implementation of the downtown plan comes out pretty darn hot. Public Works Facility comes out high.
Yep.
And COVID recovery comes out high.
Public Works Facility comes out.
Yeah, it's there, you betcha. Housing and all that falls under implementation of the downtown plan?
Yeah, that's all of the same, and it's all a must.
Okay, so the other big ticket items on there are the analysis of parks and recreation as a department, or all those park services.
Yeah.
And the charter review, strategic plan. If, if, if you concur that the things, COVID recovery, oh geez, there's a lot of them up here, down, okay, top three, what are the top three? Let's just find, what are the highest priorities you absolutely want to see happening in the next 12 to 24 months?
I just got a question, does the council, I mean, I don't understand, so if I'm missing it, explain it, but what do we have to do with COVID recovery? Isn't that dictated by someone totally different?
It impedes our ability to maybe get certain things done that you want us to, that's all we're saying, is that that is, that's the overarching emphasis, is we are still in a pandemic, so it, it may, we may not be able to aggressively get things done that you think we should because of that.
Does it also look at, continuing to look at those grants and all of those things, because we're still in it, I mean, we're not, I mean, even though we're all done with it emotionally, it doesn't mean, you know, it's gone. Would that still be involved in that, would be, you know, coming out of COVID recovery, but also continuing to look at all of the grants available and that sort of stuff, because that seems like the more it's a goal, right?
Yeah.
Didn't that step down?
The question that comes to my mind is what role does city government and its subset, which is you, the council, have in leading the community out of COVID?
Oh my gosh, for me, it's meetings, 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 hearing about statistics all the flipping time. So that's the time I'm spending on it, emergency operations center meetings, all that, governor meetings.
I'm just wondering that, I, I'm thinking about publishing this and what it's gonna look like, when, you know, we'll print it big and put it on the wall over here and all that stuff. And does, will the citizens think ill of you if it doesn't say COVID on it somewhere, that's what I'm just wondering. Maybe they could say, we're gonna pursue this as best we can within COVID.
COVID recovery support.
John, I'm losing the conversation, because the city, city administrator just indicated that COVID, the COVID plan and operations is a constraint, right? So it's not like a managing project that we're involved in, I think you, as executive staff, are, and the mayor, apparently, are listening to what the updates are, OHA guidelines, et cetera, et cetera, so it's not really a goal, it's more of a constraint, am I wrong there, or?
Right, and that's why we.
That's how it's presented.
That's how it's presented, is that we, as a goal, we want to return to pre-COVID-19 operations citywide as allowed by federal, state, and county officials.
So we're recognizing it as a constraint, and what I'm hearing from you is perhaps city council, you know, pump the brakes a little bit on your ambitious projects, because we are under the COVID constraint, that is being managed as a goal by the city staff, am I missing something there, or is that?
That's correct.
Should be communicated.
And being prepared.
Yeah, when we need to jump in.
When we're being prepared for when that.
Yeah, because I think it's understandable to the community, if we talk about the fact that it's a constraint, that we're moving through managing it, but I'm a little nervous about presenting it as a goal to manage.
As a goal, you want to return to pre-COVID, that is a goal for us to get.
No, I understand that, I just think there's a, because Greg brought it up, there's a little confusion about what the actual actionable items are for the council.
But it is gonna take a lot of city resources to get city departments back to pre-COVID service levels. And so using those city resources to have that planning and be ready to go when the powers that be say you can do these things.
I don't disagree, Chad, the question then is, do we, as council members, for our community members, should we expect staff to iterate those, what those, what that work is, because we got to, we might have to explain it to somebody, right? So what does this mean to get back to pre-COVID, and I would hate to burden the staff on it, I mean, it would be, one paragraph, I think, would suffice for all of us to be able to say, this is what it takes to get back there, because you bring up a good point, I don't think people think about the work that has to be done to get us back to that place.
I can give you a specific example right now, where all of the cities in Clackamas County are trying to get back to allowing soccer games, baseball games, soccer fields, so all of the work we have to do to find out what are other cities doing to allow those user groups to start using our recreational activities, that's an example of a lot of staff time it takes to do that.
Perfect example, and I think that's what we need to reiterate to our citizens as we're talking about that as a.
Right.
Jackie, thank you, like, I have like a ding 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 moment, like, I see half as many clients as I used to. And why do I see, because I have to clean more extensively, I have to have paperwork filled out, I have to do a lot more stuff. So then, you know, I'm not at full force, and I was like, all of a sudden, when you said that, I went, oh, thank you.
It's happened for this event, you saw Haley and Tammy working extra hours cleaning after you guys, you know, were in here this morning, they were here before me, and it, it is a constant, it's a change that we just have to be mindful of.
So, so the goal is that the council directing staff to put resources into getting to that point. And so that's why it's a council goal, is because you're giving staff that direction.
And that makes perfect sense, I just, again, it's going back into the details.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna draft up what you're coming up with here, in, in, in a draft for you to look at at a subsequent meeting, and, and I think incorporating kind of where Mark's coming from as part of that makes a lot of sense, just, just like you put it. sense, just, just like you put it, it's the caveat piece.
Well, if my name was Mark, I'd agree with you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I know, it's like.
Calling Mark.
Matt. Jeez. Okay.
You got upgraded.
Great, so what are the top three?
I've met a few Marks in my life.
Okay, I'm seeing implementation of downtown plan, public works facility, and what, code updates? I don't know, what, what are the top three on this list that are, are those things that you just say, we must get this stuff done?
So you, so we're taking COVID recovery off?
No, it, it, it's the overarching, that's our 100,000 foot. So let's talk about the 30,000 foot stuff. The projects, what are the top three projects you want city government to take on in the next two years?
I like what's on the list. I like what's on the list.
So that's overarching.
Let's prioritize them a little bit.
Parks, we're going to kind of like try and minimize parks?
I think it's pretty, almost in order of.
Of, of the list that she had.
Public Works Building should be up there on the top of the list.
I agree with that.
I, I'm going to ask Jim why not to come back in and ask some clarifying questions on his comfort level with what's presented right here in the top five areas of he feels like all of those can be done, or.
Right.
If he needs some prioritization on that.
Because they're all pretty much falling into his bucket.
As far as the parks goes.
We haven't even brought up the community festival.
Are we going to have one?
Well, it gets back to that pre-COVID stuff.
But that's not something that the council does, that's, the community festival is not, that's rotary. Hi, you're back.
Thank you.
There's nowhere to keep any more books.
Yeah, we need to get rid of books.
We're done with the.
So you've been listening.
Yes.
Okay. Do you need this?
Sure.
Okay. So if you've been listening, I'll just let you talk.
Okay, maybe rephrase a little bit.
So.
The sound is.
The way that, the way that we have these presented, this was management's recommendations for the next two years, but how comfortable are you that you can actually get all of those parks projects done that are listed there? Or do you need prioritization?
Yes, what would be very helpful, similar to what we did in Parks Board, is we can put the, even if all these are on the list, if we can put them in order priority. And what helps staff is be able to say, we're going to focus on number one. We get that done, we have more time, we're going to focus on number two. Instead of trying to do all five of these, not get any of them, but all of them partially done.
That's the magic, yeah.
That's my, my thought. If we have a priority, we're going to focus on, not to say we are not going to start the next one, but maybe we don't start the last one until some of these appear because I know there's been a lot of frustration with Parks Board for early on because there was a lot of goals and we're picking out all, but nothing was getting done. You know, we're, we won't say nothing. But you know what I mean, you know, just spending all of our time spinning the wheels.
So do you want us to then prioritize these as part of our goals?
That would be very helpful, yeah.
Okay.
And then we focus on number one, that's our priority first.
Okay.
And then we go to the next.
Do you have suggestions for prioritization?
For me personally, let's see here. So the finished, I'd say the number one there, the Melton Bar key station, that's in the works, so that should be number one, let's get that thing finished.
Yep.
Then with that, I really think the Melton Bar Park Site Plan is important because you're going to start generating revenue. This site plan is going to take about a year or so. And so the timing is going to work out, you start generating some revenue, now you can take and start doing stuff in the park, you've already gone through that process.
And maybe the user fees, like the Melton Bar shelter?
Yeah.
Those should be fairly easy.
Yeah, the user fees, we've already started doing some conversation on it, but we're kind of in a little lull right now, so we kind of haven't done a whole lot on it, but maybe move that one up to number three. The shelter fees, that I think really falls in line down later after the site plan's done, because that's going to be kind of part of that. Where do you put a shelter?
You don't even have.
Well, and then, well, you do, but it's like, you almost, do you want to charge for those competitive, you know?
Right, right, Matt Patterson, yeah.
So then do pickleball courts as number four?
Pickleball courts, um.
Put that as four, and then the shelter is five?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Okay, that's Kim's proposal.
All right, that sounds good.
Anyone disagree with that list?
Thank you.
Would the Parks Board support that list? Those priorities?
Yep.
Some of that came from the Parks Board, the only thing different is they made.
I don't know, it's a new Parks Board completely, so I don't know.
Yeah, but the Parks Board did have the pickleball thing up a little higher on the priority. That, that's the only difference, that, to Mayor's point, it's a whole new Parks Board coming in.
There you go. So you're giving them, in a sense, the marching order is your goal.
Yeah.
Well, this process is they do their recommendation and then council makes it, you know, changes it to theirs. So this is part of the process.
That's very helpful.
Anyone disagree with those priorities?
No.
So really, the idea is on the table is to take the top priorities that staff.
Yep.
Identified and run with it.
Yep. I say yes.
Do we want Public Works Facility above, I mean, it's going to be concurrent.
Make that number one?
Yeah.
I've got that as number one.
Number one or number two?
And then the prioritize next steps, that would be number two?
I don't know, I think, I don't know.
Only because we're already starting it and we're already, meetings are already scheduled.
You don't really need to prioritize these.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Let's not worry about that, it's just Jim said he needed direction on those parks and projects. He needed direction on the parks projects and you've given that to him. Okay.
Okay.
Is there, would it make sense to capture the rest of these as the next priority so they're not lost?
Yes.
Meaning, you know, for, for future years and, and to have these.
Well, my contract's only two more years, so.
Mine too.
Yeah, me too.
Several of you.
On.
Yeah.
Counting down the days.
The post Jackie universe. Yeah, let's not lose these, let, let's just list these other things. Like, you know, I, I think that idea of a, a, a community vision strategy thing does make a whole lot of sense.
I think it does too.
Would you help the community to decide next steps? Give you direction on that, so but, you've got a lot to do first.
I really like your, your idea. I think that's a great idea as well, so.
Yeah, so let's, let's capture those.
Thank you.
We will take these things, write them up in a draft, Jackie will bring them back to you for adoption, which, I don't know, you, you can decide how you want to do it, motion or resolution, whatever. And, and then also it's an opportunity for Jackie and her team to look at them and come up with some evaluation of what it's going to take. So they can make sure to let you know before you adopt so that you make an informed decision. And if she comes back and says, we could only do four out of five or something, well, fine, then you talk about that.
Do we need to talk about the pickleball at all?
I think we got enough guidance on pickleball, but I'm not sure I have guidance on the new local access board that the library has requested. Is that something, I don't want to put it on an agenda to have you guys turn it down. This is where we need to decide, do you, do you want to consider it? Or do you want to wait till the summer? Do you want to wait till more movement on the library?
Till some movement on the library?
Yeah, because right now there's, they wouldn't be doing anything at all.
Correct.
Because it's more programming and what, what happens once the library's built.
And then I think we should look at like who those partners are that are, you know, coming into the, the meetings so that we do have some diversity, maybe, you know, if it's from somebody from like a church and somebody, you know what I mean? Sort of the, we can have a little, so it's, you know, there's, then we can have some real say that we'll go to that one person.
Well, and for, so you all know, we do still have a say on the library. We have our technical group.
Right.
That's designing the library and has say, this is just a separate group.
Where's the timeline? Where are we at on the library?
Last time we met with them, it was like, what, 16 months until it was going to be done?
Well, so one of the items under administration is that now I've got to get the old city hall ready to hand over to Clackamas County for demolition. There are still a lot of things in the building that we're being told we don't have to remove, but I've got to coordinate that with Clackamas County. I believe November is our deadline to hand the property over to them. And then they're also going to be starting on finishing the conceptual designs this year, so, so that project is.
Once they take the building down though, the plan is not going to leave the lot for any real amount of time, right? They want to make sure they pivot right to the construction stage.
Construction's supposed to take how long, what's the, do they know yet?
11 to 12 months.
Yep.
I, I'm supportive of the board, I just don't want, I mean, I'm just afraid that they would get frustrated, that there's potential for the frustration because it's not communicated to them what the true roles are, what their active roles are. We, we've heard it with the library board before, frustration in whether or not anybody's listening to them, whether or not they really have say. So I think clear guidelines is fine, but I mean, I, I just want to avoid that frustration of the citizens feeling frustrated because they don't have a voice even though there's something on the floor.
Well, I will share with you, and even though I know this is being recorded, I believe they only got two applications for the new Clackamas County Library Board.
Across the board or from?
For Gladstone.
Oh, for Gladstone.
Oh, for Gladstone.
Just only two applicants from Gladstone applied for that new board, so.
As I said, take it down to five, I mean, seven and you got two there.
Well, the two, the two was new for the county?
Well, we went through a lot of talk about not having enough representation on the Clackamas County Board and then nobody applied, so.
Maybe that's a problem.
But it's the Clackamas County, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Okay, so then let's talk through the Charter Review. Is that something that you guys want to add and, and get done?
I like your idea about waiting and combining that with the visioning.
The Charter Review?
Isn't that what, what you talked about is that we were going to do like a, hopefully some kind of a visioning thing in a year and that the Charter Review might kind of mesh with that?
No, the community engagement strategy, I think, is probably the next set of goals. That's a, that's a bigger, that's a 20-year visioning strategy for Gladstone. The Charter Review.
Something that we needed to do in the next year.
Well, the other thing, I think that having our Charter Review done also with the right verbiage, also, I think piggybacks along the lines that we are progressive, we are moving forward, and this is some of the action moving forward to include everyone. The wording on this, I think, shows action.
Yeah, it sounds kind of like a low, low hanging fruit. It wouldn't take that much time to get there.
Don't get me wrong, because I'm not trying to take up all of your time, because I know it was evening meetings and things like that. I just don't foresee that it would take as much.
If, if you all are comfortable with the draft, other than that one section, I think that one section is one meeting to decide what you want the city administrator's role to be. And then we draft that language and then you put it on the ballot. I mean, it's not.
It is getting it on the ballot like Public Works.
Well, we're talking about the ballot, it's not bad to have both things on that more ballot.
So, I mean, if the goal is to get this on the November ballot, then we tell you what we need to do to get there, so.
Okay, because I like Parks Board, I don't know, I know you guys don't do it here, we like fives on our chart, you know, we like to know that we got things done. And these, so two things, the building and the Charter Review could be two things that we could get on and potentially get fives before the end of the year.
And you're one of us guys, by the way, so.
Oh.
Want to bring you into that reality, because, because you're here now.
I think we need to get that done. That's a lot of, that's a lot of work and effort for just to be sitting there. That's, that's frustrating, that makes people not want to.
So we'll assign city attorney to help get that one on the November ballot.
Get it on.
Unless you want the police chief to do it, Mindy, but.
We can call up the usual suspects too, because I'm sure that they would be willing to help if we needed them.
Any other discussion about these things at this point?
I just, some clarification, what Jackie was saying about, how do you compare to other cities about the COVID? Because you're saying it takes staff time, and I'm just reading right here, as allowed by federal, state, and county, you have to do what they say. So how, how can this city do this? And, and you have to take staff time to look at.
Because it's county by county now.
How they're doing it, if we can do it or not. I mean, the county puts down what you can and can't do.
Because we get calls all the time that says, Westland's doing this, Canby's doing this. And then we have to call to confirm, is that true, what you're doing? And so we're trying to get consistent guidelines because the county doesn't put those out.
Oh, they don't? Well, that's what, because it says federal, state, and county, that's what I'm wondering.